All right, we're going to go ahead and convene or open our October 27th, 2020 meeting of the Lake County Board of Supervisors. Want to welcome everybody and as tradition, we will call the meeting to order and stand for a moment of silence. Do we have any dedications from the board this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to ask that we take this moment of silence to honor a woman from Kelseyville, just an icon. She was our school secretary at Mountain Vista for many years and the mother of one of my classmates, Mary Kelly, just an amazing woman and she's going to be missed by a lot of people.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier, would you please lead us in to pledge allegiance?
Yes. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Do we have any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda for today?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Carol. All right, with that, we're going to move to our number five item, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items, we're using non-controversial. We can move through with the vote of the board. And do we have any items that would like to be pulled by any of the board, any of the supervisors? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and ask any of the public that is either in the virtual room or in the board chambers, are there any items that any one of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here. I've sent a unmute request out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, Jake, hearing none, let's close the room and bring it back to board chambers. Is there anyone in board chambers today, this morning, Supervisor Sabatier?
At this moment in time, we have nobody in the board chambers.
Okay, thank you very much. If you can let me know when someone does come in, I greatly appreciate that.
Will do so.
So we're going to go ahead and close, we're going to close public comment for our number five item and we'll bring it back to the board for action on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.6.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Is BSAA made for? It's made for him.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move along with our timed items, number six, number 6.1. We are going to go to public input. Didn't see any forms that were filled out this morning for public input. And so I think what we will do obviously is we'll move through and see if we have any public input. We don't have any forms, correct, Johanna? I didn't see anything.
I haven't gotten anything.
Nor have I, Mr. Chair.
Okay, excellent. All right, Jake, if you could please open up the virtual room?
Yeah, sure thing. All right, so the unmute request is out there. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Yes, and open it up to public comment for public input. If you'd like to make public input, you will have to get a form from clerk of the board, but go ahead and opening it up at this point, see if anyone had public input on items that may not be appearing on posted agenda today. Okay, Jake, hearing none or seeing no hands up, we'll go ahead and close it and bring it back to board chambers. Still the same, we don't have anybody in board chambers at this point, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. And we're going to close public input at this time. We're going to move to, what I would like to do now is go into closed session and go into closed session on items. Give me one second here. Sorry about that. I would like to go into closed session and we are going to go into closed session for just a few minutes, could take 10 to 15 minutes. Well, our next timed item is 9:30, so hopefully we can address these two issues. I will read the two issues that we're going to address. We are going to go in and we are going to go into closed session. We are going to talk about 8.2 and 8.3 at this time. I will read 8.2. Or should, I have one question for Anita, should I just read all the items or items we're going to be discussing in closed session?
Right now, sir, you only need to announce the items you're going into closed session for.
Thank you very much. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiator, chief negotiator, M. Long, county negotiator, Carol Hutchinson and Pam Semick, and B. Employees Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSSEA and LCSMA. Item 8.3 is conference with county negotiators, M. Simon, Bruno Sabatier and Carol Hutchinson and Stephen Carter, temporary representatives designed to meet with county department heads regarding salary and benefits and one unrepresented management employees. And with that, we are going to go into closed session. So Jake, I guess you'll get us transported over into the, to the room.
Yeah, and I'll get you guys moved over there as soon as the last participant.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sam, Jake and Johanna. So we're going to go ahead, we are going to open, come back into open session. Was there any action to be taken out of closed session? You're still on mute, Supervisor?
No action to be taken, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our 6.2 item, our 9:30 a.m. item. This is continued from October 20th, consideration of update on the status of the ratification of a memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Safety Employees Association, LCSEA, and the County of Lake, October 21st, 2020, October 20th through 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is following up on this MOU that was presented to your board last week and continued to today. The Lake County Employees Association is your largest employee group. It's comprised of three units, units three, four and five.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm not sure the item, in the item that was read, I saw, I heard the word "update" and that's not present in item 6.2. Isn't that the one you're taking up now?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, you're right, Anita. Thank you very much. I apologize. Considerate, yeah, I did read the, I read the wrong one, excuse me. Item 6.2, 9:30 a.m. I, consideration of a memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Employees Association units, three, four and five, and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2020 through October 20th, 2021. Thank you for that. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I didn't catch that. So before you again this week is the MOU for your largest employee group, the Lake County Employee Association, which is comprised of three units, three, four and five. If approved, this MOU will implement the CPSHR classification and compensation study of October 2019 at 85% of the market median. The exception to this is for licensed nursing positions covered under this MOU. The class and comp study would be implemented at 90% of market median because there's a long history making these positions particularly hard to fill. This MOU would eliminate the 12-step salary system, replacing it with a five-step system and restoring it with, restoring longevity pay, which we used to have as an alternative to the 12-step system where employees receive longevity pay at five-year intervals. And so employees that are presently receiving steps above step five would get the equivalent number of longevity steps, so there is no loss of pay to any employee. This unit did vote to ratify this agreement last night and, but there are a few contingencies. And if I could do a quick share screen, Mr. Chair, I'll show you what those are.
Go ahead, Carol. Thank you.
So first of all, this group asked that we specifically state on the last page of the MOU that we will have a reopener, and it's right there in the highlighted section. We will have a reopener to discuss compaction issues for those classifications affected by compaction. And so we will sit down at the table with them and have that discussion. And then in addition, there was a correction to the salary table associated with this MOU, and so we need to replace the one we had with a new one. And what was omitted in this one that, that was attached last week and today as well, is that we missed some of the licensed nurse positions. There are some licensed nurse positions that aren't actually called nurse, and so we had to go back in and make those corrections so that all licensed nurses' positions are considered in the same way. So I'm going to stop sharing the screen. There are multiple pages to this, though, just so you know. So then I, I think at this point, I'd just like to address a few general things before your board deliberates on this and, and takes public comment because there, there's certainly a lot of information going around regarding the study. The study also included some changes to class specs and some employees are, are moving into different class specs. We are, we have a process whereby any changes that are impacting employees can be reviewed through our classification and compensation committee. Those requests will come through the department heads. And so if employees have a concern that, that their classification or pay, that there's some error associated with that, there will be an opportunity for them to request a review. They can also do the same through their union. And in fact, the discussion we'll be having with this unit really pertains to the, the unit's concern about compaction issues, salary compaction issues. Just to clarify, that regarding Y-rating, there certainly are some positions that are Y-rated in the implementation of the study. And Y-rating means that, that the position has been paid at 85% or above. And so for those positions, there will be no increase, there is no loss of pay, but there is no increase. And, and I wanted to clarify that for employees that are Y-rated, they will still receive longevity increases. Longevity increases are based on continuous service, so time on the job. Those will continue. There have also been some concerns raised about if an employee is in a Y-rated class and they, they promote to the supervisor level of the same class, that they would take a pay cut because of Y-rating. That also is not correct. There's been a longstanding rule in the county personnel rules that if an employee promotes to a supervisory class, they get a 5% increase. So happy to answer any questions your board may have, but I just thought that some of those clarifications would be important.
Thank you, Carol. We're going to go ahead and open it up to the board. Any questions from the board on this item? Supervisor Brown?
So we have a lot of employees, and so the, the odds for an error or somebody to slip through the cracks is, is there. I mean, it's, the odds are good that there's somebody that we may have missed or somebody that's affected unnecessarily by this, this process, and we don't want that. We don't want that to happen. So I just want, and I think you've done that through reopeners and that type of thing, but if there's anything that comes up, I just want some reassurances and I want to be able to offer reassurances to the employees that, you know, if, if something's happened to their position, that it's been, it's been eliminated and they're, they're put in another class that's similar to theirs, but it's not the same, and there's duties that they're to perform that they haven't been trained, you know, the things like that that come up, that we will deal with that. And it's not going to be, well, just too bad, you know, we're, we're sacrificing you for the greater good of the operation. I, I don't think that's what anybody's intention is and I, I want to make sure that our employees know that right up front, if we can give them that assurance.
Absolutely. And I, I was advised that there was concern that employees felt they were being placed into a new classification that may include duties they don't actually do. And I, and certainly there were some changes to job classifications, but the department heads all had the opportunity to weigh in on those. There were a number of situations in which department heads recommended that, that we make changes to the consultant's recommendation for class specifications. We made those changes. There were some situations where department heads said, no, this is not a good idea at all. Don't make that class change at all. And we didn't. So, but, so a tremendous amount of work was done beforehand and we'll continue the review, review process after implementation as well, if there are remaining concerns.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, you know, it's not the, it's not even the whole thing. I mean, we're trying to do as much as we can for as many people as we can, but we don't want to leave anybody by the wayside. But, you know, even though we've been in this process for almost a year and a half and, you know, it's been available and we were going to do it in March. And so, you know, we could argue that everybody's had plenty of time to look at this, this thing and, and, but I also want to say that, you know, there's a lot of ground level line employees that rely on management, admin and us to resolve a lot of those issues in advance. And, you know, to be honest, everybody's busy in this crazy time that we've had. You know, if somebody hasn't looked at how things are going to exactly affect them until it actually happens, I understand that, I get it. You know, they have, they have put a lot of, a lot of trust, and I know the management has looked at it, that, that is their job. And so, you know, hopefully all of these issues have been worked out, but if they come up, we, we want to be able to have a, have a process in place where we can deal with them fairly.
I'm aware that there were also concerns expressed that, that we were rushing this. And after a seven-month delay, when we were able to return to the bargaining table and carry forward the offer of your board, we, you know, your board had expressed a desire to make this happen as soon as possible and working within the constraints of what our payroll system can do. We were making every effort to make this happen during 2020 as opposed to having it pushed into, well into 2021. So certainly, you know, getting it done in a short timeframe, but only with good intentions to get this, these increases in the pockets of employees.
Yeah, and I just got the, there's 605 current position classifications. I was just informed. That's a lot of position, that's a lot of classification positions, but there's a lot more than that of employees. So, so, you know, the chance of, of missing somebody unintentionally is there, but we, we just need to be able to fix it when, when it comes up.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. Glad to see this coming back ratified by the group. This one was important to me. This is our largest union group that we have, representing a large number of employees for the County of Lake. One of our major goals was retention, and while not everybody is impacted the same, the goal of retention would be completely sideswiped if we had done any reduction in pay. And the intent was to make sure that nobody had a reduction in pay. And I appreciate the commentary being done right now to basically say, look, sometimes mistakes happen. If there happens to be a mistake, there's a way to figure it out and a way to get out of that issue. But the intent was to make sure that we moved as many as we could forward with what was available within our means. And I am happy to see this so that we can go ahead and vote on it as they've ratified it as well.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Now, Carol, obviously admin, everyone's worked on, so I want to thank you very much. It is, you know, one more positive step forward here. And I want to thank you for the clarifications and really talk a little bit about the issue of implementation of the study as, as we've been moving forward. So we have been working on this for a couple of years. COVID-19 definitely put us back. We, we're having discussions as a board to hopefully get this thing completed in 2020. And I know it does seem like, you know, we are moving very quickly, but I just, I do want to just reiterate that, you know, from a board standpoint, at least from my point too, for being an individual board member, that this was something we wanted to get implemented hopefully in 2020. And it looks like we're going to be able to achieve that, achieve that with most of our, our units. And this is a good step process moving forward. So to address the issue of, yeah, it seems like it's moving quickly. That's because, you know, we wanted to see what we could get done here in a timely manner. And I want to thank everybody who's got us to this point and the ratification here that we're going to be able to do is one more step in that. So Carol, I know that, you know, you know, there is some stuff out there saying, hey, it was move forward and potentially through the admin office, but this is a decision of the board and it's something that we wanted to do is try and get this done. And as always, there are unintended consequences of things happening when we make decisions. And I just want to thank you for all the clarification, the points that have been brought up by the board and by you today with the intention of this thing being done in, in the best way that we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, just wanted to add that I seen the additions with redress, reopening for redress or whatever, I think it says, reopen to discuss about any complaints or situations. And I appreciate that. I know that there, it gets difficult when we talk about these things because we have to talk about them in closed session. And so we're also bound by different, you know, Brown Act rules and whatnot. So it goes around in the public with people that work in the organization. They either assume things or they, they see things and they don't know the intricacies of it. So I appreciate the explanations that were given because from the feedback that I've got, those answer or give redress to those questions. I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments from the board at this point? On item 6.2. Okay, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will open the room up here. I've sent a unmute request out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, hearing nothing and seeing no hands up in the virtual room, go ahead and close the virtual room. Bring back public comment to board chambers. Do we have anyone in board chambers that would like to make public comment on this item? I couldn't hear you if you're talking, Supervisor Sabatier?
Nobody in the chamber has any public comments.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment on item 6.2 and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Employees Association units, number three, number four and number five, and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2020 to October 20th, 2021. And, and with the, do I need to say with the addition of 8.6?
I guess clarification we need to come on.
You should include anything, anything that's, that's been added today or pointed out today, just, just by making reference to it should be sufficient.
Okay, so with the addition of section 8.6?
And an amended salary table.
And amended salary tables, yes.
There's still a second?
Yes, second.
All right, motion, go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move to our 6.3 item. Now I'm on the right item. 9:30 a.m. item, continued from October 20th, 2020, consideration of update on the status of ratification of a memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Safety Employees Association, LCSEA, and the County of Lake, October 21st, 2020 through October 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a very brief update regarding LCSEA. Your board approved this MOU last week contingent upon LCSEA ratifying it before today, and they have done that. And in fact, their signed version is attached to your agenda software. And it does not require approval of your board because you already gave it. However, it does require the chair's signature. So we're pleased to see that this group has ratified and again, want to thank this group and all the groups for their incredible perseverance as we've worked through this.
Thank you for that update, Carol. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing no one, no board members with comments, we're going to go ahead and we are going to open this item up to public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here. I've sent out a unmute request. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, hearing no one with public comment at this point on this item, we're going to close the virtual public comment room and we will bring it back to board chambers. Do we have anybody in board chambers that would like to make comment on this item?
It does not appear anybody would like to make a comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go close our public comment on item 6.3 and we'll bring it back. That was just an update. But it has been approved and yes, do want to thank the group for getting it completed and admin and our negotiating team finalizing everything. Thank everyone who got that completed. Thank you for the update. Okay, with that, that'll conclude our 6.3 item. We're going to move to our 6.4, our 9:30 a.m., continued from 2020, our October 20th, 2020, consideration of a memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association units and the County of Lake for October 21, 2020 through October 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're still engaged in negotiations with this group, so there is no update on this group today. However, we would like to continue to carry this item from week to week with the hope of, of having forward movement that we can report to your board on.
All right, thank you. One question, will we do that by motion? I know we did it by motion last week, but we'll do that by motion to move it to a certain, a time certain on our, potentially our November 3rd agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that you do. It's, it's not a public hearing, but nonetheless, I think a motion is appropriate. Also, at least as to the continuance, you can call for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Go ahead Supervisor Brown.
So...
So is there any reason to put it on for next Tuesday? I mean, I don't, it didn't, I didn't get a sense that there's some close.
Well, one, Mr. Mr. Chair, if I may, one reason would be that, um, that your board does not meet the following Tuesday. Uh, so if there is movement, it would be an opportunity.
Okay, got it.
That you would miss for a couple of weeks.
That makes sense.
Okay, uh, any more questions from the board? Okay, we're going to open this up to public comment. The public comment, uh, will be, uh, directed towards, uh, moving it. I guess continuing this to our, our next agenda item, which is November 3rd, uh, by the board. So, uh, go ahead and open it up. If there's any, uh, public comment. Have you opened the room already Jake?
Uh, no, I have not. Uh, I just sent that request out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay. All right, Jake, let's go ahead and close the room up. We'll bring it back to, uh, board chambers. Uh, is there any comment in board chambers on this item?
Does not appear to have any public comment here in the chamber.
Okay. So we're going to close public comment on item six point five. We're going to bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Do we have a specific time, um, for this item or just provide a date?
Well, let's check in with Johanna about our timed items and our openings for next week.
I don't, I have the lien hearing that was supposed to be brought back from a, a, like a couple of weeks ago at 10, but that's the only thing I have. So nine thirty would be.
Go ahead and put these on for nine thirty again next week.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I move to continue item six point four. Consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association units and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2020 to October 20th, 2021 to the next Board of Supervisors meeting on November 3rd, 2020 at nine thirty AM.
Second.
Johanna, let's do the roll call.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to our six point five item, our nine thirty AM item. This is continued from October 20th, 2020. Consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association units and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2020 through October 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are also still actively negotiating with this group. And we do not have an update for, uh, today. Um, however, we are recommending that this, uh, MOU be continued to next week and would recommend further that it be also heard at nine thirty AM next week.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none. Jake, if you could please send out, um, we're going to do public comment. Public comment is to be, uh, focused on the continuance of this until our November 3rd meeting. This item six point five. So go ahead and open the room.
All right, I sent that request out. Uh, if you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, let's go ahead and close the room. Bring it back to board chambers. Is there anyone in public that would like to make public comment in the board chambers?
There does not appear to be any public comments in the chamber.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment at this point and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to, I move to continue the item six point five on our agenda. Consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association units and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2020 to October 20th, 2021 to the next Board of Supervisors meeting on November 3rd, 2020 at nine thirty AM.
Second.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, that completes that item, item six point five. Now next up, we do have our six point six item. I would like to ask the board, uh, is there a need for a, uh, break at this time? Or should we just continue and push through? It looks like, uh, yes, I got a yes. So let's take a five minute break and we'll reconvene for our six point six item at ten forty-five AM.
Mr. Chair, let's just confirm that the team is back in place. Johanna, are you with us? Uh, yeah. Okay. So we'll check in with Sam and Jake and make sure we're ready to roll.
So we're ready when you are.
And I am ready when you guys are as well.
Right, we are. Excellent.
And Rob will be ready when Rob's ready.
Do not see the, uh, the boardroom camera. There we go. All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our, um, October 27th, 2020 meeting at, uh, ten forty-five is what I have. Uh, so we're going to go ahead and it's ten forty-six. So we'll go ahead and move to our six point six item, ten AM, public hearing, hearing on account and a pro, a proposed assessment for one zero one zero zero Bell Avenue, Lower Lake, California. We do this with, uh, community development and this is a public hearing. So, uh, Johanna, we will be, uh, swearing some folks in.
Would you like me to do that now?
I think, uh, do we have our community development director who's, or who is going to take up this item here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Marcus, where we go Marcus? All right. Uh, yes. Go ahead Johanna.
Okay, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. So good morning. I'll go ahead.
One second Marcus. I, I just want to make sure, uh, you can see in the Zoom room if we had, uh, any of the folks that were, uh, part of this property or anything else. If we had anyone in the audience, uh, both in the virtual room or in the boardroom. Just wanted to make sure that if you did want to, you know, make some testimony today that you had to swear in. I just, one more time, just want to make that clear. Make sure we didn't miss anybody. And I don't think we have. I just wanted to double check. All right, thank you. Go ahead Marcus.
All right. Good morning. Uh, my name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm a code enforcement officer, uh, within the, uh, in the community development department. Today I'm here to give an account and a proposed, proposed assessment for an abatement action that we took for the property located at one zero one zero zero Bell Avenue in Lower Lake, California. Um, basically the abatement action involved a demolition of a structure that incurred fire damage. Um, let me go ahead and share my PowerPoint with you. All right. And again, we're here to hear the account and a proposed assessment. All right. Upon the completion of an abatement, the enforcement officials have caused a notice to be prepared specifying the work done. Uh, the board basically shall hear the matter. These are pursuant to the chapter 13 of the, uh, Lake County Code. On the right there is the notice of assessment that was mailed to the, uh, property owner and, um, posted at the property and also, uh, circulated for publication. Um, the, the property is located off of Highway 29 and near Highway 53 in Lower Lake. Um, the property is Zoned R1. It is in a residential neighborhood. I included a, uh, I guess a bigger version of the part of the map area. Just kind of give you an idea where the property is located. As you can see, it's located in a residential neighborhood, uh, has somewhat of a, somewhat densely populated there, but it is in a, uh, neighborhood that are all Zoned R1 properties. So just to kind of give you an understanding where the property is located and the issues surrounding the property and why the abatement action was necessary in this case. Uh, we received, uh, well, first off, to kind of give you some background, uh, there was a fire sometime in January, February of 2019. Uh, the structure, uh, the, the dwelling is a manufactured home. It's a structure that incurred fire damage, significant fire damage. Um, in February of that year, uh, one of our personnel from our building division posted an unsafe, uh, red tag on the property. Um, the issue then came to, uh, code enforcement's attention in March of 2020. The complaint issue coming from a neighbor who was, uh, uh, tired of looking at the burnt down structure. And he filed the complaint that the mobile home is burned and what is left remaining is a hazard and is in danger of falling over. So give you an idea of what we looked at. So I went out to the property, March 11th, and this is what I saw at the property there. As you can see, it's a manufactured home with a detached, uh, the, the, it's not a garage, but they were assessing it as a shop. And as you can see, it incurred significant fire damage. Here's some better photos here to give you an idea of what we were looking at and what, what was actually occurring on the property. Some more pictures here just to give you an idea how substantial, uh, the, the fire damage was, uh, for the structure here. Um, according to my building inspectors, you know, there was nothing to salvage here. Uh, the property, uh, needed to be demoed. And again, just some more pictures here. Um, so what we did is we first tried to locate and identify the property owner. Uh, it was determined, uh, that the property owner was deceased and had died in November of 2015. So our next step was to try to locate or determine if the property was, uh, involved in a will or was part of a trust, or if there was a next of kin that wanted to take, uh, ownership of the property or had an interest in the property. We were able to locate a next of kin, an adopted son of the property owner. We discussed the situation with them. He was familiar with the property. We, uh, discussed the, uh, issues that occurred on the property and the damage that the, uh, structure that had incurred. Uh, the property owner didn't see, uh, uh, communicate to us. He didn't see any intent or interest in pursuing the property. He didn't see the value being there. Um, he basically, I discussed probate. If he was interested in pursuing the property in probate, he, uh, informed me that he did not have an interest in pursuing the property in probate. Um, after that, we did follow up repeated calls with the next of kin. Uh, fortunately, we're not able to contact him or have him contact us back. So we issued a notice of nuisance in order to abate for the structure. The violations that we cited in that were, uh, chapter five, which is a building code. And basically the, we cited the fact that the property was an unsafe structure. Um, also we cited, uh, uh, chapter 13 issues, you know, that the structure was dangerous to human life, unsafe, detrimental to the public health or safety. And then also another chapter 13, uh, uh, violation, uh, causing unsightly appearance, uh, a place that creates a potential health hazard or public nuisance. A chapter 13 violations involve public nuisances. Chapter five is the, uh, building code, uh, for the Lake County. Um, as part of any demolition, so a determination was to demolish the property. There was no way of salvaging it. There was no benefit in salvaging it. Uh, usually our building inspectors advise if there's at least one wall that can stand, um, then the property can be salvageable as that they, you know, a new owner could build around it. Um, uh, you know, avoiding certain fees to the fire, local fire district and schools and those kind of things. Um, but in this case, it was determined a demolition was necessary to, uh, remove the health and safety issues persisting on the property. It's part of the first step in that process. We have to get an asbestos test. Um, so we contracted with Adams Lab. They came out. They took an asbestos test. They determined that the property did have asbestos containing material. Also in addition, I also like to add as part of the asbestos, we also have to coordinate with Lake County Air Quality Management. Um, so we had to send over the, uh, results of the asbestos testing to Lake County Air Quality Management, uh, fill out an application with them. And we also had to pay a fee, uh, for that, which I'll discuss later when we go over the costs. Um, in the competitive bidding process, we have, uh, a list of contractors. Um, only one contractor submitted a bid, uh, Leonard Talling. He then subcontracted, some, I'm sorry, subcontracted out to NRC, which assisted with the handling of the asbestos material, removing the asbestos material from the site and disposing of the asbestos material appropriately. Um, so we did the demolition and just to kind of give you the before and after pictures, um, as you can see on the left is the before, on the right is what it looked like after. Uh, they removed the entire structure. You know, we ensured that the electricity was, uh, cut off. We certainly ensured that the sewer was cut and capped. Um, give you some more ideas, but on the left again is another picture of the structure. On the right is the property as it exists today. Um, the complaint, it lives across the street from the structure. So every morning he comes out, these are, this is the, what he was viewing every day. This is the issue that, um, initiated the complaint. Um, so the, the demo was completed. Um, we had a final, a, a final inspection done. The inspector signed off on it. And here you can see the cost of the abatement action. Um, so on the left there is the administrative costs, you know, investigating the complaint, background research, preparing a warrant. We did have a warrant signed by a Lake County judge to access the property. Um, again, the, uh, property owner had been deceased. Um, so we felt the best to get a warrant to go on the property just in case there were some interested parties that may come, come around later or after the fact. Um, on the right there is the, uh, I guess you could say the hard costs. Um, the cost for the contractor was $24,140. That was for Leonard and the subcontractor to handle the asbestos material. Uh, 650 was the cost of the asbestos test. And then 39807, that's the fee we paid to Lake County Air Quality Management. Um, the fee there, uh, the fee there is for national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants. That's what Nez Hap stands for. Um, so we came up, so basically that totals to an amount of And right now staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors conserve, confirm the total assessment of $25,000, $25,672. And direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. As you can see, we kind of itemized out the, uh, cost there to kind of give you a better understanding of the cost involved here. A note of interest, there were delinquent property, uh, property taxes on the property in the amount of $9,555.59. Um, the property is not eligible for a tax lien settlement until June 30th of 2021. Uh, we just wanted to include that information so the board has all material information, uh, for their review. And at that time, that concludes, uh, my presentation. Are there any questions?
I do have one thing that, uh, I don't, I don't have a question about it, but I, something that you've said came up. So, um, leaving one wall on it, uh, you said leaving one wall up, um, helps them in not having to pay, you know, school or, or fire fees. But actually, uh, if, if they demo any, anything, demo the whole thing, they get credit for that square footage. So we should probably just include something in there, just a statement that that, that the amount of square footage was taken off so that any new owner, anybody that wants to develop that can then take it to the, we, it's up to the fire department and the school, but usually they waive that, that portion of the square footage cost if there's a, a, uh, statement on file to that, uh, to that effect.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Marcus for being available to have a conversation with me about, um, this specific item and offering some clarifications for me as well. Uh, there's two things that came up. Uh, one was something that came up before and one just came up right now as, uh, Marcus was making that presentation. And I'm curious as to who, I believe you said it was NRC? Is that a local company? And, and the reason I ask is because would it have been cheaper, especially if we're putting this on the, our taxes as a lien, as an assessment? Would it have been cheaper to deal with NRC on their own? Cause it looks like they did the entire process versus going through. did the entire process versus going through Leonard's and then having it be subcontracted to another company, which means Leonard probably made their cut, their finder fee, and then passed it on to the next person. Just wondering if that's a company we're aware of, or they've never submitted for making a contract? Just kind of curious about that.
All right. So my understanding of how this was conducted here is that NRC was only responsible for removing the asbestos containing material from the property? Even though they've removed the asbestos containing material, there were still remaining structures and there was still cleanup necessary to clean the property off, remove the health and safety issues on the property? So that's the understanding of the, my understanding of how the operation worked. NRC removed the asbestos material, then Leonard came up and finished up the demo and removed all remaining debris or rubbish from the property. NRC is not part of our list of registered contractors. They're somebody that was subcontracted through our contractor who is on our approved list of contractors.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because on their quote, it says, "NRC cleanup and removal of asbestos," and then later on for the 3,000 cleanup after all asbestos has been removed, oh, removed by NRC. Gotcha. I read that wrong. Okay. Thank you for that. And the other part that I discussed with Marcus, and this is a further conversation, but just wanted to bring it to the board, is we know that there's a lot of house fires that happen throughout our communities, and I don't believe, based on what Marcus told me, that we're always alerted to these house fires all the time as far as code enforcement goes to maybe follow up and make sure that it doesn't become a blight in that community or a nuisance in that community. And that doesn't mean jump on it right away and start doing notice of violations, but at least have it on a list so we can keep track and make sure that things are moving along, rather than waiting for a complaint to come from the neighbor. It'd be best, in my opinion, if we can have a collaborative effort between the fire department and our community development to try and clean up these things and bring it back to a more suitable location for everybody to live in, rather than having burnouts remain for sometimes years on end. But that's, again, a further conversation. Just wanted to make sure to put that out in the public.
Maybe we should do the same for them as we do when there's a mass fire with, and offer assistance of this is what you do, you know, sorry this happened to you, and here's the numbers for the different agencies that could probably be of assistance to you.
I don't disagree on that.
And I'd like to comment also. We've had an internal discussion about this issue. Again, it was spurred by Supervisor Sabatier, and we'd like to be informed of these issues as soon as possible so that we can start working on them, start contacting the appropriate parties, and seeing what we can do to rectify the situation in a timely manner. So this is an internal conversation that we had, and we're exploring how we can be better at receiving information regarding these type of properties so that we can start addressing them, working on them, and eliminating these issues in a timely manner so that the citizens of the county do not have to live in such situations or nearby these situations.
All right. Thank you very much. Any more comments from the board? Questions? Marcus, thank you for your presentation. The one question I would have is, do we have, obviously, I know folks have passed away and we're moving through the process. Just want to make sure we, everybody anytime may have an opportunity to be here to speak on this item. Supervisor, I see you raising your hand, so I'll go with you Supervisor Sabatier.
I just wanted to make one last comment. I appreciate you coming back to me. Every time I see something like this where we've taken it from A to Z, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate seeing that because it's not an easy process to get all the way through. There's a lot of red tape. There's a lot of processes. And in the long run, there's also some money that's needed to be able to make these abatements happen. And so bringing these to us and showing the community that we are taking these projects from A to Z, I think is something that's important. It's important to me, and I'm sure it's important to the public.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, Marcus, thank you for bringing this forward. I have to beat the same drum that Supervisor Sabatier brought up. It is very important to see these things happen. And with as many issues as we have in this county, for you to take care of this is just showing that we're here. Thank you again.
Okay, if there are no more questions then, we're going to go ahead and we are going to open this up for public comment. We're going to open up the public hearing, so we're going to open this up at this point, Jake.
All right. I will send a mute request out. That request is out. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
And just a reminder, need to be sworn in to make comment on the side, so go ahead. Somebody said me.
That would be me, Ray Powell. What else do you want?
Okay, Ray, I do have a question. Were you sworn in at the beginning of this hearing?
Oh, this is the first, this is the first time I've ever zoomed, so I just wanted to listen to the meeting. So, okay.
So on this public hearing, if you'd like to make comment on this item. All right, Jake, I don't see any hands up or anything, so let's go ahead and close the, close the virtual room.
Jake, you're done. Let's close the room.
Bring it back to board chambers.
Every day is the first day.
Is there anyone in the board chambers at this time?
There are a couple people here, but I do not believe they wish to make a public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're going to bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the assessment for 10-100 Bell Avenue, Lower Lake, California.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I apologize. Did I need to say the exact amount, or was that good enough? I guess I'm asking Ms. Grant.
The exact amount would be very helpful because this is actually a confirmation of cost hearing. That's the point of the hearing.
So I would like to amend my motion to move to confirm the assessment of $25,672 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property of 10-100 Bell Avenue in Lower Lake, California.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Supervisor Crandall, seconds. Let's go ahead and just take that vote over again, Joanna.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Apologize for that.
Thank you Supervisor. We're going to go ahead and move forward with our 6.7 item. Thank you very much, Marcus. Thank you Director De Leon. I saw you on the line also. We're going to go ahead and move forward with our 6.7 AM, our 6.7 item, our 11 AM, discussion of potential eradication of mute swans from Clear Lake by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry. Good morning, everybody.
Go ahead Supervisor Scott. Good morning.
I just wanted to introduce this item that, this item, I brought this item to the board today because of a recently published Record B article concerning eradicating of approximately 20 to 25 mute swans. It caused the community some cause and some concern, and I thought it'd be best to have this item put on for discussion. And today we'll hear from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they'll provide a report clarifying misconceptions and our process moving forward.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. And I know also, you know, Supervisor Brown also was looking for this, so we're going to go ahead then, and we'll go ahead and I guess what we'll do is we'll jump right into, and it says Jay Bush, is that Jacob Bush?
It's Josh.
Josh Bush, thank you. Josh, go ahead and go ahead and turn it over to you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here.
And could you please give us your first and last name and your position, please?
Yes. Let me get the screen sharing brought up here.
Jake, can you enable Mr. Bush to share his screen?
Here we go.
All right, good morning, everybody. My name is Josh Bush. I'm a wildlife biologist and environmental scientist for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I'd like to thank you for having me today. Thanks for accommodating this on short notice. I know it's important to CDFW and the community. So what we're doing is striving to be good partners and do our duties in the public eye. I'd like to thank Matt Rothstein for answering all my questions prior to this meeting and getting it all set up for me. This was always a plan to go before the Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors, but due to the public response to the Record B article, we're here a little bit earlier than had planned. I look forward to giving you a little update and outline on what we're doing and thinking. So this was a little rushed, a little rushed timeline, so this isn't going to be a stunning or super interactive presentation, but it's going to have bare bones and hopefully answer all your questions. So let's get going. Okay, today, a quick outline of what I'd like to talk about. We'll start off with a little mute swan biology, where they come from, what they're doing here. We'll transition over to, you know, Clear Lake, their legal status according to Fish and Game Code as well as Title 14 Code of Regulations, some studies, status, and links for everybody to, you know, see background on the problems that mute swans, mute swans create, an issue statement directly revolving Clear Lake and mute swans, CDFW involvement, our proposal, and some frequently asked questions. A little bit about mute swan biology. They're not native to the United States. They're native to Europe and Northwestern Asia. They're brought into the United States to adorn parks from Europe, sort of like a vestige from, you know, European immigrants. They're long-lived and can live in the wild for 20-plus years. They are non-migratory. They're migratory in their native range, but here, especially in Clear Lake, the habitat can support them year-round, and there is no freezing of the lake, so they do not need to move, and all the resources are here. So they are year-round residents. They're prolific breeders, up to six eggs per clutch and potential for two clutches per year. It takes two to three years for them to reach sexual maturity. They're a large charismatic bird. They're commonly seen in, you know, ballet like Swan Lake. The ugly duckling fairy tale was a mute swan, the main subject. You know, you think of mute swans and you think of Disney. And that's a lot of the times why it is controversial when they're invasive to a community. They're gigantic birds. They're your biggest bird on Clear Lake by far, with an average weight of 17 to 23 pounds, up to five and a half foot length, and up to eight foot wingspan. So they are physically superior to all other birds, and they're the top bird on the lake out there. Identification, three swans that are, that could be around in North America, in California. Our native swan, migratory swan is the tundra swan, so those are our winter resident in California. Mute swans are identified by their green bill with a large knob on the front of it, and sometimes we'll get trumpeter swans, which are, you know, migratory strays and infrequent visitors to California. So specific to Clear Lake, just a little bit of background. According to a Record B article written by Terry Knight in 2010 and updated in 2018, there were three in Clear Lake at that time. I think they go back to about, the earliest account was 2004. I did a count on August 11th of this year, and there was a minimum of 25. All the swans I saw were from Library Park to the entrance of Rodman Saloo. There's no natural predators for these animals on Clear Lake. And then I've commonly been asked or seen the question asked, why the population is only 25 after having three in 2010? I think some people would, might expect the population to be higher. I think this is right in line with what I'd expect with a two to three years to, for these birds to get to reproductive age. A little bit about the population status in California as a whole. We started seeing them or recording them in 2003, where their population seemed to be stable, and as you move along to 2018, you'll see the population is exponentially growing. And that's of major concern to our folks and wildlife managers throughout the state. This modest, while the population seems modest in Clear Lake, it appears that the swans are starting to take hold. And in other areas, this population is representative of some areas like Sassoon Marsh, which is a particular hotspot. And CDFW is considering and desires other control efforts in those areas and other areas around the state. Legal status in California. The link, if you type in restricted, Google restrict California Restricted Species List, that is an outline of where these code and regulations came from. It is a nice little infographic or info sheet about four or five pages, but I pulled those from, I pulled the relevant codes and regulation here. So Title 14, they are designated as a detrimental species in the state. Section 671, they are a restricted species. It's unlawful to import, transport, or possess these swans. And this is because due to their impact to native wildlife and habitats and their adaptability to California environment. So they do very well here. Fish and Game Code, Section 2150, explains the permit to import, possess, or transport, and the fees and exemptions. They are legal to possess without a restricted species permit prior to possession or in approved AZA-approved facility. So AZA-approved facilities, which are zoos, aquariums, can take these birds in. They are classified as a non-game bird. What that means is they are not resident game birds or migratory birds, and that is a catch-all for everything else. So what the non-game bird designation means is it cannot be hunted or taken by the general public. I know this isn't a desirable slide to look at, but what I wanted to illustrate, and I'm sorry for this slide, but what I wanted to illustrate is references and relevant studies that show we've done our homework and researched accounts of damage of mute swans. It is not hard to find these accounts. Any type into mute swan in northern, into Google will come up with relevant listings, accounts, and studies showing their damage to an ecosystem and habitat and environment. One of them, this research and guidance is a cautionary tale to the detrimental nature of these birds and the cost of managing them. The most disturbing accounts that I saw were impacts to black terns. They build floating nests similar to grebes, and entire colonies have been severely impacted. I saw this as a great, you know, as an applicable correlation to grebes and grebe nests in Clear Lake due to this same nesting structure and same nesting type. So an issue statement of what I saw was the potential for disruption in Clear Lake. I saw the mute swan's ability to displace and outcompete native species. Those include grebe, yellow-headed blackbird, migratory waterfowl, American coot, and others. These are both species of cultural and economic importance. Mute swans are highly territorial and aggressive to other wildlife. There are also accounts of them being aggressive to people and domestic animals. They consume a large amount of submerged aquatic vegetation or salve that has potential to alter ecosystems and is used by, for brooding cover for juvenile fish, including Clear Lake hitch, a California endangered species, and with significant cultural importance, and also economically important gaming fish, like, you know, like bass. Mute swans are also reservoir for viruses, including duck plague. And removal of mute swans before the population becomes unmanageable is a And removal of mute swans before the population becomes unmanageable is a desire by the department. A little more on that. So this is what we call the invasion curve. It is a tried and true, this is a tried and true visualization of management of invasives, of something like plants, or even like star thistle, which we have in Lake County, or even wildlife, like wild pigs. I would say both star thistle and wild pigs are past the point of containment or eradication, and now we're in a long-term management phase, which is, control costs are up and area infested is also up. I'd like to avoid this with mute swans, and right now I think it's very probable we can do it if we act. I think we are well within the eradication zone. A little background on CDFW involvement and a timeline of events. So I was alerted to the presence of mute swans in spring of 2020. I was able to get out on the lake in August and confirm their presence and perform the count, which I saw 25 swans. I was a little bit hampered because of our equipment. We had a jet boat, which is not ideal with the aquatic weeds. So I wasn't able to get close, but a minimum count of 25. I alerted our headquarters' waterfowl program, as well as our regional, my regional leads, and we developed a preferred alternative, which was lethal removal, to remove swans to benefit native species. I was then directed to gather community support before going to the county Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, then eventually the Board of Supervisors. I approached several entities and was offered the support via letter from the Big Valley Tribe, the Middletown Tribe, Scotts Valley Tribe, as well as the Redbonn Audubon Society and Lake County Land Trust. All those support letters were provided to the board in advance of this meeting. I followed up after community support with a request for the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee to make a determination or a letter of support. Subsequent to that request, you saw the article written by Terry Knight, published in the Lake County Record B, that frankly admitted, you know, the article admitted damage caused by swans. We were not contacted prior and did little to inform the public of the damage caused by these swans. So because of that, we're here today. The public response has not been great to that article. The current CDFW proposal. We were looking to lethally remove swans via airgun or firearm. Any staff member will be trained and experienced shooters. We see this as a safe and effective and humane strategy to remove swans. We understand the optics, and that's why we chose to do it in a public forum. All of this has been completely public and without, you know, we're not hiding from anything. We know from other counts and other work in the state that there would be staunch opposition to this. We feel it's a, you know, kind of a necessary thing to do or to undertake. We don't take the decision lightly to, you know, propose eliminating swans. That's not why I and others in the department got into this profession. I did it to, you know, promote healthy environments and native species. So it's not a great thing to say that eradication is good. Or, you know, I didn't get into it to bust a bunch of swans. You know, direct removal of swans is definitely a noticeable impact. You know, invisible impacts are those native wildlife that you see that don't, that are reducing in population due to the impacts of the swans. You know, a question I often propose is removal by firearm equivalent to loss of native animals via an introduced species. One is very visible. You know, we're contemplating eradicating swans via firearm. That is a, you know, there will be a count and a total to that. If allowed to continue, as you go out, will you see less grebes? Will you even notice? Just because you see, you will not, you will not not see grebes on the lake. They will continue to be there. But in what number? That are still a count associated with a reduction in native species. They say don't look at comments. There was a lot of public comments on Facebook. I didn't heed that advice. And I got little nuggets that I thought were great for our frequently asked questions section, so. A lot of the questions I saw were related to relocation, so I can speak to that a little bit. It's a difficult, difficult thing to undertake. Permits are issued by our license and revenue branch. Due to the tight timeline on this, I've yet to consult with them on the probability or likelihood of getting a relocation permit for a private entity to hold these swans. We'd need a willing recipient with adequate space and habitat. The birds would need to be sterilized in pinions or have their wings clipped prior to doing so. The capture attempt is extremely difficult and labor and time-intensive. And the safety of the birds after undergoing this is still not guaranteed. Sterilization of birds is very unlikely or difficult. It's not a common practice, as it is in mammals, or more likely in mammals. And it's difficult due to their anatomy, and even if sterilized, it'd be unlikely to put them back on the lake. Egg addling or oiling or nest destruction. This is a difficult one due to the necessity to access private property, potential for secondary nesting, nesting or missing nests. The long life of the birds makes this more difficult, and it's usually ineffective and does not mitigate direct impacts to these birds, which are their territorial and aggressive nature that displaces native wildlife. I was asked if studying Clear Lake-specific impacts. In an ideal world, we'd have many years to do this, but there is an abundance of data and studies in other habitats that can be implied to Clear Lake. And applied research is, I think, a valuable goal and a useful study here. We know the impacts. We know the habits of these birds, and a political science, applicable science is useful in Clear Lake. Code and regulation change. CDFW is discussing this internally, trying to remove or attempting to remove them from the non-game species list that would allow the, allow public take. The difficulty in this is that swans are in areas where public hunting may be difficult, next to docks, shores, personal, you know, private property. And then what about other invasive species? You know, for this exercise, this is only implying to mute swans. We know Clear Lake and Lake County have many other non-natives, and they're all causing impacts. There's no denying that, and it's not what this effort is speaking to. Where to go from here? CDFW wants to be, continue to be a good partner and want to continue to coordinate with the Board of Supervisors and the Advisory Committee. We have not finalized the course of action. No action is imminent, and CDFW is still evaluating alternatives internally. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for listening and open it up to the board for comment and questions. I'm not sure how to get out of shared screen. Okay.
Who, my question?
Sam?
Yep.
Turn the lights on, Sam.
So when you mean imminent, what does that, what does that mean in timeline terms?
There is no timeline. You know, we're discussing this with you here today, trying to figure out a course of action. If everything went smooth, ideally, it would, we would have an action before the next nesting season to reduce recruitment or eliminate recruitment, because, you know, more birds makes this harder to manage. But there's no action to speak of at this time, and there's no timeline.
All right, Supervisor Brown?
So I got a couple of questions. One, you know, I look at the PowerPoint that you've prepared here, and you've indicated in there a couple of times that part of your effort is to coordinate with the Advisory Board and the Board of Supervisors, but I can't help but notice that you didn't put this on the agenda, that it was asked for by Supervisor Scott and myself after you went to the media. So I think any bad press that you got, you probably deserve by going about it that way, so just to be clear.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. This was a result of taking this proposal to the Advisory Committee. So that's your own internal Advisory Committee who makes recommendations to you guys directly. This was done via their chairman, Greg Juisty, and one of your board members took this to the public, and that caused the uproar. This was not a CDFW action taking this to the public.
No, fair enough, yeah. It was a lack of inaction, I suppose, because you can't say you were working with the Board of Supervisors when you actually, you know, we asked you to come today so we could talk about this, because, you know, we've dealt with this kind of stuff similar to this in the past, and that's why I asked for it to be put on there, so we could get ahead of this, the emotional charge, and get down to what really is the issue, so.
Yeah, so if that's your take, I apologize for that, but I was following your chain of command going through the Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know there's a chain of command, but anyway.
The Board of Supervisors and inform you before anything was taken. I don't think that was clearly articulated in the article by your Advisory Committee member. And that's why we're here today. I had zero time to prep you guys after that article came out. And I was scheduled two days, you know, after that, after the article.
So who, well, and I get it, but, you know, it is, I think any reasonable person would expect that this was going to get a little bit volatile politically and emotionally and all that. So, I mean, we've already dealt with this once, and I'm hoping, you know, well, first of all, I'm hoping that the shooting is not an option, but if it is, that you don't use your same trained shooters that you used when you crippled all the geese, so.
Yeah, so I could speak to that, because I knew that was going to come up. That was an action that was proposed by the city of Lakeport. Yes, CDFW, law enforcement officers, and USDA Wildlife Services were involved. They did not, they skirted the public process on that one, and we're trying to avoid that by obviously going before the Advisory Committee, and now we're here with you, not on our planned timeline, but that's okay. They operated at night to try and keep this out of the public eye, and operating, you know, in that way was difficult. They were using lights and made shot placement and some of their methods much more difficult. By going through the public eye, we can, we hope to do this correctly, and shots can be taken safely under daylight. You know, we're not trying to hide our efforts here. That effort 10 years ago was much different than what we're planning here.
Okay, well, I hope so, because, you know, that's why we're here today, because that was such a, you know, that was a big deal, and it still is, you know, I mean. Anyway, who complained? Is it just the fishing game that's concerned or Fish and Wildlife? Because I haven't heard any complaints from the public. I don't know, and I appreciate the part, you know, that they're dangerous to grebes, because the grebes are actually at risk, the western greeb is actually at risk on Clear Lake anyway, even before the swans, but I haven't heard any effort by Fish and Wildlife to resolve that, so maybe we can bring that back at a different time to talk about, you know, how you're going to, you know, help to protect the western greeb, but I don't want to get into that now, because that's not on the agenda. But who is it that complained?
This was brought to you guys. I believe you had many public comment after the article.
No, no. What started you, what started your involvement in the very beginning? From when you got the call that we've got this disaster coming to Lake County, and we need to get ahead of this, and you decided you'd eradicate the grebes. Who's the impetus of that? Was it?
Yeah, I was alerted by the member of the public to the swan's presence. I had previously not heard of them being on the lake, and, you know, I made an appointment to go out, and I spotted them.
So a member of the public?
All the science is very clear on what to do. If you see these swans, especially in its early stage of infestation.
It is, it is early, and I appreciate that. I think there are some options available, even though you've indicated that they're difficult or whatever. Sometimes doing the right thing is a little more difficult than doing the wrong thing that's easy. So I think some of those other options that you put up there of oiling the eggs and, you know, try to capture some, and I think there's a combination of a lot of things, but shooting them, that's not on my list. I think that's, I think that's totally avoidable. And, you know, as far as invasive species and Fish and Wildlife's involvement, historically, you know, we have a lake full of bass that's eliminated the crappie and bluegill and hitch population, and we've got wild turkeys, and we've got, you know, the pigs, and we've got a lot of stuff. You know, Lake Davis was actually, had to be drained because of Fish and Wildlife's involvement with an endangered species. So there's a history there, so I just want to make sure that this is done correctly and, you know, appropriately for our lake. Because it is our lake, even though you have, your department has ultimate say over much of the wildlife. It is our lake. This is our home, and this is, you know, we will have some input on this, and I think that I'd be interested to hear what the rest of the board says, but I don't think going out and taking headshots on the swans are an option that I'd particularly like to see.
All right, Supervisor Scott?
I would absolutely agree with Supervisor Brown. We need to come up with another way of controlling the population of swans. As you pointed out, there are ways, and they may be difficult, but I think that's the way that Lake County needs to go, not going out and shooting these swans. I think the outcry of the public, even without the public, for myself, there's no way I could vote yes on going out and shooting these swans. So there has to be a better way. We have to put our heads together and figure something out. And I know we could get public to volunteer if it comes down to needing to go out and oil the eggs or remove the eggs. Or I've even been contacted by wildlife rescues that are willing to take the swans. There's a couple of different ones. I would hate to see the swans go, so I would like to find a way that we can keep the swans here and control the population.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for coming and making this presentation for us. Obviously, this came a little bit out of left field when the article came out on Record B. Then all of a sudden, it became a viral issue here in the community. I think we need to definitely, and I don't think anybody said the opposite, but we definitely need to recognize this is still a freshwater natural lake. And we, any changes to the ecology can have drastic impacts, and I think that it is important to look at the balance where on one end, we potentially do nothing, which nobody has said that, but potentially do nothing and see damage happen to our natural habitat and have that be impacted and changed forever. Or we do something about it, which potentially could be the extreme version, which is to go ahead and shoot the swans so that we can save, and it's not one or the other, because, in my opinion, what we have now is what needs to be saved in order to make sure that there's longevity in the ecology and a good balance within the ecology. And I get it that we've all made mistakes in our past. I don't think those need to be necessarily brought up, except for we need to do it right today, because we've learned a lot about science. We've learned a lot about ecology through the decades, and we're still learning more and more. And I think that we're just trying to do the best that we can with the information that we have. What's strange to me, and I'm going to sound very cold-hearted, is if this was a buck or if it was a duck, nobody would care.
You know, okay.
And I'm just, I'm curious as to, yes, we would love for it to be done in a more humane fashion, if possible, but it's weird to me how we're so fearful of the idea of killing something when we allow it to happen for so many other animals. Why one animal over another? That's where I get confused, when one animal has the potential to impact or destroy the thing that we all say we love so much, which is our lake and how it's the central pulse of our entire county, and yet we're kind of squeamish about potentially trying to save it. So I'm good with looking at alternatives, if they're possible, but at the very least, we need to make sure that we keep moving forward to eradicate the problem before it becomes a problem we can't deal with any further.
So I can answer that for me, just a very simple, very simple philosophy that I was raised with and still have, and that is, don't kill it if you're not willing to eat it.
If we find ways to donate carcasses for consumption, is that a go-around? Would that appease your feelings in that manner?
I think what you should do is make a swan season and sell tickets or tags for that.
And just to let you, just to remind you, the state of California did say that picking up roadkill is now legal, so we could always just say that we're handing out roadkill.
Yeah, or we can do it the easy way, and the better way, that apparently seems to be very difficult for DFW to, you know, find alternative methods. I think that's the way to do it.
Okay.
I've never been referred to as squeamish, so I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
One of the things I'd like to bring up is just the amount of attention this has got. And one thing I'd like to highlight, we are in a time right now where everyone seems to be on a different side of the spectrum. However, in this situation, I've had people that argue frequently about other things agree with being more humane about the situation. So for me, I'm about that. for me, I'm about that. I want to see the people united on issues. And so if there's an easier, I wouldn't say easier, I would say more humane way to do this, I would really appreciate looking into those options rather than, you know, taking the most lethal approach. I understand it's important for the lake, however, someone, someone brought it here. It got here somehow, just like many other things that got here somehow. So if there's a way to do this in a humane way, I'd like to see that.
I have another question if I could, just came in my head. So these, they're not migratory, so they're not, you know, if we were to find, you know, somebody who had a private lake, you know, a large pond or anything like that, could they be relocated there within the county or anywhere else for that matter?
Yeah, there's a possibility. They'd have to get that permit we spoke of. I'm not sure how willing our license and revenue branch is to give those permits out due to their detrimental designation and it would have to have suitable habitat and aquatic vegetation and then we'd have to determine, you know, if placement is likely. It would also, they would also have to be sterilized, which is not good or easy for the birds and have their wings clipped.
I should have.
There is also.
I should have, before I asked the question, I should have taken into consideration the intense unnecessary bullshit bureaucracy that would have come with it, so I apologize.
All right, Supervisor Brown. We are going to, I'll try and keep it all constructive here, obviously, but get our point across. And Josh, I think at this point, our, obviously, you can tell by the comments that the eradication by shooting the swans obviously is not on the table. Looking at alternatives are something, it seems like a consensus of the board is really leaning towards here. So understand and appreciate the presentation that has been given today, but it seems like we need to go a different path here. And if you'd be willing to work with us on that, I think we definitely have some members at the board that would be willing to work on an opportunity there, but, you know, appreciate, appreciate your time today. So any more comments from the board at this point? Supervisor Sabatier.
I just want to clarify that all options for me were still on the table. I did not try to get rid of all possibilities.
Okay. Thank you very much Supervisor. All right, if there are no more questions for Josh at this point from the board, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Please, we'll keep public comment to three minutes we can as we move through this. So we're going to go ahead, Jake, if we can open up the room. I don't see any hands up at this point.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
This is John Miles. I live on Rocky Point.
Thank you, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, I, John, if you're still there, I think I muted the wrong source.
Hello?
Are you there, John?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, as I was saying, I look at six swans every day. I live on the north side of Rocky Point. Four of these swans are babies. I've never, since I've seen these swans and I've lived here 12 years, I've never seen them be aggressive to anyone except maybe a geese that's, I agree, they're territorial. When the geese come in, you know, they change them away. But as far as the coots or mud hens, whatever you want to call them, my side of the lake is just full with them and the swans swim around them all day long. They don't bother anybody. I can't see shooting these animals. I, that's ridiculous. I mean, it's bad enough when duck season comes along and I hear shots all over the place and people putting down decoys to shoot ducks. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I think they're a beautiful bird. They swim in my little coat every day and they're just gorgeous. If you want to get rid of anything, get rid of the weeds so I can take my boat out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, if you have public comment on this item, it is open at this point. Please give us your first and last name.
Kathy Toy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
As a citizen here in Lake County and one who is also a retired humane officer and has worked with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, I have to say, I really would need to see more statistical evidence of a need to eradicate these swans. To me, right now, it's not an issue of how to eradicate, but do we need to? When Josh said that he received a complaint and went out onto the lake himself, he was speaking as an individual. It doesn't sound like a study has been done. Perhaps they're working from a historical standpoint, but it seems to me that there should be a local study done, taking our time to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I think, I disagree, Mr. Sabatier, with your comment about perhaps not talking about the past. We must remember the past. We must remember what happened with the geese. It was a travesty to our community. And yes, it was done by the council in Lake County or in Lakeport. There was, there was knowledge. There was knowledge by other folks in the county. So I think it's important that we always remember history. And I just would ask that this be slowed down and we take a better look at what needs to be done here. Thank you.
If I may comment on that, I'm just asking that we not judge Mr. Bush based on past actions made by CDFW or our decisions to take actions, that we learn from those actions and move forward with a clean slate with Mr. Bush.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay, public comment is still open. If you'd like to make comment on this item, please do so now. Jake, is the room open so they can, they can make comment if they need to?
I think there was a Tina Gordon that wanted to speak, but she got muted again.
I have asked that person to unmute to see if they had interest in speaking.
Hello?
Hello, yes, Tina?
Hi, yes, I definitely had concern about the mute swans being eradicated. We spend a lot of time on.
I'm sorry, may I please confirm your first and last name?
Tina Gordon.
Thank you.
I called in today just because I have taken some time to speak to different people. We spend a lot of time on Clear Lake in our boat and enjoy seeing the swans. They seem to only stick to the west side of the lake, have never seen them anywhere else. And I understand that there's concern about the grebes, but they take up the whole lake and they nest all over the place. But I just don't understand how all of a sudden there can be an article on the Record B talking about eradicating these swans. Nobody's heard anything of it up until this point and everybody's saying it's not a secret. And I, I don't enjoy them because they're fairy tale birds. They're actually beautiful and maybe they don't belong here, but we have a lot of other types of animals and plants that don't belong here either. I looked into a lot of the studies and so far, even in speaking with Josh, there is no actual study of the swans on our lake. They're only going off of studies on, from a different, I think it was in Michigan, he said. So I would just really like to see them be able to stay. And the fact that we have 20 or 25 in over 16 years, they aren't growing at a pace that they're going to wipe everything out on this lake. So I just wanted to make a comment on that today and I really appreciate everybody taking their time to find a better option than just killing them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any more public comment on this item?
Yes.
Please state your first and last name.
My first name is Mari, my last name is Clip. I work with Josh Bush at the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and I just want to bring a couple of other items up real quick just for your consideration. I know everybody is concerned.
We've got a, we've got a background noise or something going on, so just to let you know.
Can you guys hear me okay this way?
It's better.
I just took my headset off. Yes, no?
Yeah, we can hear you better, but you've got a background humming noise going on. All right, go ahead.
Alrighty. So my first name is Mari, my last name is Clip. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that Josh made that I think may not have deserved, or certainly deserved attention when he was bringing up. We were essentially, we're trying to get ahead of this and one of the things that Josh pointed out is how quickly some of these populations are able to grow. Yes, the current population is probably not a big concern, but obviously into the future, it could become very disconcerting if this becomes a very large populations of very, very large aquatic birds, whether that would get into water clarity issues or whether it would get into issues of further impacting the grebes that are already impacted today. The other thing that I want to point out, this is something that people pointed out earlier, you know, this is your lake and this is also why we're talking to you. The reason why we continuously talk to the tribes as well as the Audubon Society, as well as other organizations, is to understand what would they think about us pursuing this action. And again, I want to point out that the tribes are in favor of this because I believe that they understand what's going on, as well as the Audubon Society, who obviously has a big name nationally, as well as in Lake County, as it pertains to protection of birds in particular. So I just want to make sure that those comments are understood. I understand everybody is responding to the removal, lethal removal of a bird that is absolutely majestic, is phenomenal to look at, but we also need to make sure that we don't close our eyes, that within the current timeframe, we have, we have an ability to do something now that we may not have 10 or 15 years from down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, thank you for that comment. From what I've heard, there's only three out of the seven tribes, so that's like below 50%. I mean, there's three tribes, but that's not all of the tribes. So you do have some support from the tribes and that's appreciated, but there's seven.
Thank you Supervisor. All right, any more public comment?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Please state your first and last name.
My name is Ray Powell and I was thinking about the timeline. If you look at it, it was 2005, that's 15 years. It went from two swans to 20 something, 25. Do the math, that's less than two swans per year. It also is allowing the two to three years to sexual maturity on the babies and there's also a lot of predators. When the babies are born, there's eagles, there's raccoons, there's minks, there's a lot of things that'll get the babies, even wide mouth bass. So I think we should go with the, what the first lady said about extending the investigation. I mean, let's get, and plus, not only that, but they're all related, all these swans are related because they started from the same two. So how's the gene pool? You know, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I'm just throwing that out. It's a possibility. Maybe they won't increase at a breakneck pace like everybody seems they're going to.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for joining us today. All right, do we have any more public comments on this item?
We do have a public comment here in the boardroom when you're ready.
Okay, and I did see something just pop up, Sarah Ryan. Jake, are we be able to get that comment?
I sent that individual another unmute request.
Hi, this is Sarah.
Please state first and last name, please.
Hi, Sarah Ryan with the Big Valley Band of Puma Indians. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment on this. I'm calling, or I'm wanting to make a comment on the mute swan issue. Big Valley Band of Puma Indians was one of the tribes that submitted a letter in support of the eradication of the swans. And although it has received a lot of public concern and outrage is an appropriate term, I guess, regarding the eradication of these swans, what, what the tribe is thinking about over here is the overall bigger picture of the health of Clear Lake and its native species. And for many decades, for millennia or more, there have been activities that have occurred in this watershed, species that have been brought in to help with fishing or just, you know, people's pets or whatever that have ended up creating a lot of problems for the native species of Clear Lake. And I'm thinking of the Clear Lake Hitch, of course, but there are also native fish species which no longer exist on this lake because of invasive species that were brought to this lake. And it's now, Fish and Wildlife was even a part of the stocking of various non-native species in the water bodies of California and now they understand that that's not a wise thing to do, that there needs to be an evaluation before they do any stocking anymore. In this particular case, from what I'm seeing people writing about the swans, the swans were potentially brought in from a local guy who was breeding them or just having them on his resort or his area, his park. And it sounds like the person passed away and these, over time, the swans escaped and have been breeding. Even though the, there might have been, might be a slow growth that's happening on Clear Lake right now, there is a lot of evidence and I've certainly posted it on Facebook and I know that, of course, the Fish and Wildlife and the White Paper has identified how destructive the mute swan can be to the native species, not only to the wetlands. And that, of course, is areas that the Clear Lake Hitch and other native species on Clear Lake need to be able to protect themselves and also things that they eat are in that area. But the mute swans can destroy a huge amount of that habitat as well as their aggressive behavior, territorial behavior impacting the grebes and other nesting birds that, you know, this county and our tourists have grown to love. So that is why the tribe has submitted, submitted a letter in support of eradicating these swans while we still have time and to really, you know, protect and love and notice and recognize our native species, the few that remain, to give them a fighting chance. Because even though the mute swans are beautiful creatures, they don't belong here. They are from, you know, another continent entirely and their, their impact is not as, or is greater than their benefit. So we hope that, that that can happen and not get caught up in kind of the emotional, you know, love of a beautiful white swan, but to understand that, to protect the ecosystem here, that this is the best course forward while we still have a small number of these mute swans on the lake. And to really take that, you know, same process and procedure for any new species that we have here. I know the county's put a lot of time and money into quagmire muscle prevention. So thank you for the time to be able to speak on that and hope that it can happen. We are definitely in support of the eradication of these swans.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, do we have any more public comment in the virtual room and then we'll go to the board chambers afterwards?
I've sent one last unmute request out to the Zoom floor.
I know the county's put a lot of time and money into quagga mussel prevention, so thank you for the time to be able to speak on that and hope that it can happen. We are definitely in support of the eradication of these swans.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, do we have any more public comment? In the virtual room and then we'll go to the board chambers afterwards.
I've sent one last unmute request out to the Zoom floor. Or one more, rather.
Okay Jake, we're going to go ahead and close the virtual room on public comment. We're going to bring you back to board chambers. Do you have anybody in board chambers that would like to make comment? Please give us your first and last name and then make your comment.
John Moss. I questioned the statement by the Fish and Wildlife expert that there are no predators of this swan because a speaker already mentioned raccoons and mink as a predator and I'd like to mention possibly the otter. And I'd like to know what citizens can do who don't agree with the Department of Fish and Wildlife's intention to eradicate the swans. Do we have to go to a referendum or what can we do to put our public record comments down?
Uh, John, I think they're currently making your public record comment right now.
And there is no further public comment in the boardroom.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Sabate. All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. We're going to bring it back to the board. Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to add, I know there was some public wanting us to push this item because of the PSPS and people not having the ability to join Zoom or go to the courthouse today, but I just wanted to make sure the public knew that there was no decision being made today and this will be brought back to the board at another time.
Supervisor Sabate and then I'll go to you Supervisor Brown.
And I wanted to mention, because somebody said no study has been made, we, we can't do every single study and studies take years and then once we wait those years and get the study, then we may be in a much more dire situation. We have a whole entire quagga mussel program as was mentioned earlier by Ms. Ryan. We don't have quagga mussels. We, we have been looking at what's happened in Michigan and we've been looking at what's happened in other lakes and have decided to take the precautionary measures necessary to protect our lake based on the science and the data that we have from those other areas. And I think that with the other studies done on the mute swan, I don't think it's a, I, I don't, I, I'm not here to debate the science of whether they can make an impact. I, I think the, the issue is how are they going to be handled to be moved or eradicated? And, and I think that's really the matter to, to discuss and I'm okay and open with all types of possibilities, but in the long run, we can't just keep hitting the brakes because it feels bad to do what needs to be done. If, if the only choice is to eradicate them by shooting them, then, then so be it. It's just, we, we, we need to look at the options and eventually dwindle down to what's possible.
Okay Supervisor Brown, thank you Supervisor Sabate.
Yeah, and I, it's not the only option, so that's why I'm, you know, considering that we should probably, you know, look at other options and, and there's this big urgency that we have to hurry up and get this done before next nesting season just seems bizarre to me because there's 25 swans on the largest lake in the state of California. I'm pretty sure that the lake will be fine this time next year if we get rid of 10 of them right now or, or, you know, a few of them at, at a time and I, I don't think that there's, you know, the, the end of time is coming if we don't get rid of these swans before next spring. There, there are ways to do it. I think it's a, a good opportunity actually to, you know, to find options available rather than the easy way for Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, whatever they're called this week, to, to just go out and start taking headshots.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and, and I understand that, you know, the detriment to the lake. I do understand that. I, I'm just looking for a more humane way to deal with this situation. I'm of the same mindset that I don't think there's going to be 1,000 next year, there may be 30 next year, I don't know. But if we're working to find ways to eradicate them in a, in a humane manner, there's also, they obviously seem like there's a lot of people that'd be willing to volunteer that could probably conduct some sort of training with, with your department, you know, Mr. Bush or something like that, that could help with any of this type of initiative.
Okay, I, you know, obviously I think it's pretty clear, looking at, you know, alternative options, definitely, you know, as rose to the top here, I appreciate this being on the agenda today, but, you know, like we said, it was a report only and we'll be looking for different opportunities to do the eradication, which hopefully can do both, protect the lake and give different opportunities. And I think our community most likely will step up at one point or another and see if that opportunity can be achieved. And as Supervisor Brown said, it isn't, you know, the easy way is to not do much, but I think there are opportunities. So completely agree with the rest of the board that eradication may be necessary, but I think there's different alternatives to get that done.
We have to give them a voice, they're muted.
Yeah. Okay.
Unless they push our sex.
Go ahead Supervisor Brown.
No, no.
You don't want to.
We're going to finish with the mute comment.
No, that's fine.
All right, so Supervisor Scott, I know you put this on the agenda, you know, continuation of this and I know Supervisor Brown wanted it also, we continue communication on this or we're going to move forward. I know there's no action to be taken today besides the general consensus and feeling that came out from the board conversation, but can we look at another agenda item down the road or?
Well, okay, so I think, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I was, I was talking with Supervisor Scott.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think it'd be good, does, does one of the supervisors sit on that committee that actually reported to the record B? I think it might be wise to have one of us present at that meeting to be aware, because I know it took us all off guard when it hit the record B, we weren't aware of the situation. So it might be good if, if one of us attended those meetings. Can we do that?
Chair, if I could?
Go ahead, Carol.
So I had, I polled the information on the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. It's been enforced since 1992 by, per a board resolution. It does not have a, a board member appointed to it. It has a number of appointees and if you'd like me to kind of run through what the categories are, I'd be happy to do so. So it has a Fish and Wildlife Conservation Representative who is Lynette Schimmick, a second Fish and Wildlife Conservation Representative who is Randall Williams, Land Conservation Alex Tyler, Agriculture is Bobby Dutcher, Education is Greg Juisty, Recreation is Terry Knight, our Ad Commissioner Steve Hayek serves as an ex-officio member. And then for the general public, each of your districts has an appointee. For District One, it is Roland Ladeau, District Two, it is Paulino Yanez, District Three, it's Mark Miller, District Four, it's Rich Hinscliff, and District Five is Kirk Andrus.
And do we know when they meet?
Matthew Rustein, are you on the line? You were in communication with Greg Juisty, who I believe chairs. Matthew, do you know what their meeting schedule is?
They do not have a meeting currently scheduled, not regular.
So they meet on an as-needed basis?
Right. They meet on an as-needed basis. I can definitely follow up with Greg and see if there is a meeting imminent, but last I understood they did not have one scheduled and were not planning to meet immediately.
Okay. All right, thank you for that information.
But if one, if a member of your board wants to make contact, we could certainly facilitate that and request that they meet or, you know, they do serve in advisory capacity to your board, so.
Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, what I was going to, before they, when I was going to go into the, the list, I didn't remember all of the people that were on it, but I know that group pretty well and, you know, we've, we've had a lot of presentations by them. They're always, you know, very engaged and, you know, feel, some of them are passionate, some of them are just, you know, they're, they're there for the right reasons. And I, I appreciate that, that group. I think they'll probably schedule something for this, but again, these are public meetings that anybody can attend and two supervisors can show up and I don't see any reason unless there's anybody adverse to it that, that Supervisor Scott and myself both couldn't be there just to, to see what's going on. I think, you know, this, I think this justifies and warrants that, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that also.
I have talked to Greg Juisty about, about this subject and it was, there was a lot of information still to be gathered by them. He didn't feel like, well, I shouldn't say it, how he felt, because that's, that's up to him. So, anyway, I can communicate with him if that's okay.
Yeah, I, I, I am definitely in favor of that. If two supervisors want to do that, absolutely.
That's definitely.
Okay. All right, with that then, that will take care of this item. There was no action to be taken, there was a report to be given, so at this time, I know we still have quite a few items. What I would like to do is take a lunch break for the, and then begin at 1:10 with the rest of our items this afternoon, but I, you know, I, I will, you know, that would give our staff and ourselves time to take lunch, so let's go ahead and take lunch from, and we'll come back at 1:10 PM and finish out our agenda for the rest of the day. We said we'd come back at 1:10, it is 1:10 at this time, so we're going to go ahead and reconvene.
And we make sure our county council is back with us.
Okay.
I'm here. Thank you.
Excellent, Anita's here, excellent. All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our October 27, 2020 meeting. We are moving right along with our agenda here, so we're going to go to our 7.2 item, our consideration of a cannabis tax usage and expenditure policy and procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to introduce this briefly. Patrick Sullivan is going to carry this item. Based on several discussions staff has had with your board, the most recent of which was during your budget hearings, for your consideration, we've come up with a draft proposal for how you might spend your cannabis tax dollars. It's modeled in the same manner that, that your transient occupancy tax policy was quite a few years ago. There's a tremendous amount of flexibility here for you and we're really just looking to engage in discussion and get your sentiments and Patrick has a interactive spreadsheet that he will display when the time is right, where you can kind of envision giving percentages of those funds to the different categories and what that might actually look like based on the current proceeds received for cannabis. So Patrick, I'll let you take it over. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I can begin running through the potential categories here in this draft proposal. The categories represent areas previously identified as being important in board discussions and this is just sort of a draft to get a discussion started with your board. Would you like me to put up the spreadsheet now that shows the projected dollar values or do you want to run through the categories first, Mr. Chair?
I think we'd like to run through the categories and then you can display it.
Okay. So we began with allocation of funds to planning, code enforcement and water resources. There was an immediate need in these departments. The funding gap is currently met by the general fund and especially with the expansion of the cannabis unit, we targeted this allocation at 15%. The second allocation was the category of law enforcement and I would highlight on both law enforcement, which is number two, and number four, the youth alcohol and drug education programs. These percentages are a little bit lower than some of the other areas, but part of the reasoning for that is because the state cannabis tax funds, all the discretionary revenue is targeted at certain fields. The largest is an overlap with the youth education programs. 60% of the state discretionary funding for cannabis is intended to go there in the next year and I believe approximately 20% is set to go to law enforcement and a lot of these funds are going to be made available in the form of local grants. So we tried to account for that as we did this, but I just want to be sure everyone can keep that in mind. Number three was economic development of housing and risk reduction. That's given a proposed 12 and a half percent allocation. That represents a pretty wide array of priorities that we've already previously discussed. We just addressed the youth alcohol and drug programs. Number five was the cannabis grant program or CAN grant. This was the internal grant program which we were directed to come up with. We've done one round of funding already, there is a second round in the works, so the projected allocation was 10%. Number six was workforce retention and development. This was a pretty expansive field, basically encompassing all of the county departments. Cannabis has such a wide-ranging impact, we want to include a higher allocation for this, at least in our proposal. This was set at 30%. Number seven was the Board of Supervisors Discretionary Spending Fund. This was targeted at 7 and a half percent. This, there'd be different ways to approach this. There had been discussion of whether it would go a target, targeted allocation by district or whether the board would look at county priorities as a whole. Number eight, this is probably the portion that deserves the most explanation here, is the Cannabis Revenue Stabilization Fund. This is targeted at 15% for an allocation. One of the major concerns that staff has regarding the cannabis revenue is that we are early in this process and at this point in time, a lot of the operations are very large in size. So there are individual sites and companies where their tax bill may be $500,000 or a million or more. So what our concern is that because there is so much revenue concentrated in some smaller operations, we want to make sure if there was a change in management, if an operation wasn't participating in a year in cultivation, that we would be able to accommodate those swings in revenue without impacting any of the programs that are being funded previously in these other allocations. So our proposed idea was to take that up to $2 million. After $2 million, that allocation would be spread as your board saw fit amongst other areas, but for now, our recommendation was 15%. At this time, I could put up the spreadsheet so that you can get an idea of what these dollar figures are in each category.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
Patrick, while you're sharing that, I, I would just like to add that however your board wants to see this, it would be our intent to review this plan no less than three times a year to make sure that you're comfortable with the, the way it's broken down and those times would be at recommended budget, at recommended final budget, and then a third time at mid-year budget and of course any other time you want it to be. But, you know, in light of this being an evolving industry, we just felt like it needs to be looked at pretty regularly.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Yeah, and I would highlight as well, we're, we're trying to base some of our estimations of where the state expects to provide the local funding based off the announcements they're making this year and their projections, but a lot of that is not going to be official until spring. So to a certain extent, we're taking an educated guess on that as well. So, these are the categories that were discussed, laid out on the spreadsheet here with their draft allocation that was given. 7 and a half million, 7.5 million is the revenue figure we're working off of right now. As of a few weeks ago, about 3.7 million had been paid in cannabis tax since July 1st. There's actually been another few hundred thousand paid, I think we're closer to 3.9 to 4 million, but generally speaking, people paid their first installment, so 7 and a half million was sort of a, considered to be a safe, fairly conservative projection. So as you look here, for instance, the 15% allocation to planning, code enforcement, water resources, that comes in a little over 1.1 million. As you go down the list, you can see these others, law enforcement would be 562,500. That does not include the 200,000 from the previously paid cannabis taxes, so that's important to consider as well. That's, that's not reflected in here. This policy is covering, going forward, the tax revenue that comes in after July 1st. Number four, 937,500 for economic development, housing, risk reduction. Youth education programs, 187,500. CAN grant, 750,000. So again, that does not include the CAN grant money that was already distributed because it came out of that previous pot. The workforce retention development is at 30%. That's 2.25 million. The Board of Supervisors Discretionary Fund, I'm at 562,500. And the stabilization fund in this first year, if that allocation were used, would come in, again, a little over 1.1 million. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Do you also have the ability to change these allocations, to add, subtract, or remove them, if that's helpful in your discussion?
All right, Patrick. Thank you very much for the presentation. I think, I think we have the, you know, obviously the stuff to prepare for. So if you can go ahead and take down at this point the presentation.
We can put it back if your board reaches a point where you play with it a little.
Okay, there we go.
We created that because we found, you know, for ourselves in developing this draft, we really needed some idea of what it would look like. And so I, I think you may find that helpful a little later on in your discussion.
Thank you, Carol. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to board discussion. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you very much. Patrick, thank you for that presentation. And good to know that we're still increasing our tax potential for this year's cultivation. I was curious, before I go into specifics of the plan, how much money is left over from previous years? Because we're talking about money that's been collected as of, I think the deadline was August 30th, and I think that the bills went out either July 10th or August 10th. So we're looking primarily right now at the 2021 fiscal year numbers, which we're not gonna touch until the following fiscal year starts, where we start budgeting these types of things, which is why we're talking about that. But there's still some leftover funds that we discussed during our budget hearing, and I believe that it's in the 700,000 range. And wondering if you can let us know what's left over in previous years cannabis taxes.
So after the allocation of 200,000 to the sheriff's office and the 330,500 to the cannabis grant program, I believe there's approximately 748,000 is what I'm seeing left over. I would, I would like to double check that, but that is what I'm seeing here.
Okay. And I know that during the budget hearings, at least, I, I had mentioned, and I think there were some other supervisors, I don't know if it was a majority, I don't remember off the top of my head, that did agree that if we're collecting it, we need to spend it or at least allocate it if it's for a much larger amount, for a larger project that we just need to save some money for. So I, I hope that today, not only could we discuss what the future plans are, but also how we can allocate the money we currently have that's not being used. Because I hate collecting taxes. If there's no actual impact to the communities we serve, we should be spending this money and not just holding it for no reason. We should have a specific purpose. On the policy that's before us, which splits it up into eight different categories, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not a fan. And the reason I'm not a fan is it's, it's split up in so many different ways that I think that the impact is not going to be realized in our communities. And I think that if we're looking at 7.5 million dollars, we have the chance to pay for, or allocate money for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. We have the chance to look at potential airport expansion. We have the chance to really get some projects done that will possibly never get done unless we look at them with this kind of money that we have access to. And that doesn't mean they can't be supplemented by other grants or other opportunities from other sources. But I think that if we split it up the way that I see it, and, and it's a very shallow comment that I'll make, it looks to me like it's supplementing what's happening in each department. And after just having some raises done, it just seems like, are we gonna see something coming out of that? Or is it just creating a safe zone? And I don't, I don't want to create a situation where it gets used in the way it's always been used. I want to make sure it gets used for something that we're gonna see happen for all of us in the community because I don't know how long this is gonna last. And so elections matter. And if something, if we see a House of Representatives and a Senate at the federal level that's completely democratic, what's the potential to seeing legalization of cannabis cultivation throughout the, in the United States, where each state now gets to say what they can do? That's gonna show a huge drop in cost of per pound for cannabis. That's gonna make an impact on if we can collect those same type of taxes or not. And I think that we need to not, I think we need the money to have a quick impact for us before it potentially disappears. And so I want to see projects. I want to see what's ready to go. What can we throw some large amount of money at to make a huge change for us here in Lake County? Not a youth alcohol and drug education program that, I don't have the program in front of me to say that we're gonna make that happen. I don't know what our economic development, housing, risk reduction program is. I want to make it happen, but without a project in front of me, I'm not quite sure what to do. So I, I think that the percentages, especially right now, we're looking at 8 million, possibly more next year. I think we need to look at it on a year-to-year basis. And I think it's gonna help when we're done with our economic development committee hearings to bring a plan where maybe we can apply some of these funds to that plan. So without a plan in front of us, I, I'd like to offer a suggestion. I think one of the biggest things that we have to face as a community is fire. And without having good amount of money involved in abatement of properties that are not in compliance with our hazardous vegetation ordinance, we need to use some of that money to go and, and, and get it contracted out to get abated. And we're limited on the amount of funds we have for abatement. And I think that let's bring a project of what that looks like, and let's go ahead and pitch that money. And because if we can save us from a future burden of another fire in this community, that is absolutely great money well spent, in my opinion. Another issue that I'd love to look at, and it kind of parallels with our conversation that we postponed with the sheriff last time during the budget hearing. We, we were looking at potentially five positions. We went with two positions and then said, maybe we'll talk about it later. Well, one of my goals is that we bring back some kind of drug task force because we are being overridden by illegal grows in so many areas that it's making it uncomfortable to live here for many people. And we have to stop not only the destruction of the environment, but also the people that are, that have been here for generations that may want to leave because they no longer feel safe or comfortable at home. We gotta make those changes. So those are the two things I would like to see us go after because I think we can make an impact. And it could be seed money for it. It doesn't have to be a revolving door. If it's money that's put to salaries, I think we should look at a minimum of a three-year contract to make sure that it's not a year-to-year, year-to-year situation. I know that's what the cannabis revenue stabilization fund is all about. But I just think that we should look at long-term contracts on how to use this money. And I, I foresee this money will come in for three years. Let's review if it's still gonna continue to come in after that, based on the changes that have occurred, either at the state level or at the federal level. But that's my offer. I'd love to see a fire mitigation program approved and money put to that use. And also a drug task force deputy program so that we can go ahead and really do something to go after our illegal grows. Because one helicopter and one sergeant, I believe he's a sergeant, is just not enough to make a huge dent. That person is working really hard to make that happen, but we need a lot more to happen.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier, thank you very much. I just want to talk, you know, just a little bit about, you know, the draft policy and just respond to some of the comments that you made, or give us an opportunity to talk about this. I think having the draft policy and procedure put in place with the expenditure, or the proposed expenditures at this time, would allow us an opportunity to work on and have those conversations about achieving the things you were talking about. I know we talked about risk reduction, you know, that is currently on there. In, in one of the categories is an opportunity for us. Also law enforcement, another opportunity that's on there as far as a budgeted amount that would be coming down each year, a potential that we could look at. And, you know, I think having a draft policy as we're going through this would allow us to do those short-term and long-term planning opportunities with the cannabis revenues as they're still coming in now and being prepared to make decisions down the road if things are affected. And I think that was the, you know, the thought behind the budget stabilization, where I thought was, like Patrick covered earlier, the opportunity there to stabilize it just in case there are changes that we don't foresee in the future. And also, you know, as we are all doing in each of five of our districts, there are all certain projects or opportunities that have been there for, for years, or opportunities that may, or projects that may want to have happened. So the discretionary funds per district is a unique opportunity, I think, that doesn't exist at this point for some, you know, budget conversations as we're moving through it. So I, I think the overall picture and accomplishment here would be maybe setting up the procedures as we move through it and having this policy so we have a real focus on how we're moving forward with using the tax dollars. With the ultimate thoughts, when we were having budgets and conversations, and I know we may have some folks to speak up today, but I know we had some folks from our Lake County Cannabis Alliance that were looking at, you know, obviously stabilizing wages, retention, and other opportunities. And I think we, you know, it's at least spoken about here that the largest category is at 30% at this point, to look at those long-term goals, hopefully, to do what we need to do here in the county. I know it's early, but coming up with this policy, I think, is a good idea as we move forward with it. Whether or not the percentages stay the same, I think that's a general conversation we need to have. But we like the idea of the opportunity so we can plan, you know, as supervisors in individual districts, but the overall success of the county and how these tax dollars are gonna affect, affect this new industry being established here. Supervisor Scott.
I'd like to thank Patrick for bringing this to us. I, I like the idea that we're, we're looking at percentages and how we can go about spending this money. I think we need to make sure that we take into account when this did hit the voters. We told the voters it's gonna go to law enforcement, the youth, and water resources. So I like the idea of doing a big project, but I think we have to make sure that these monies are being funneled down in the proper avenues that we told the voters it was going to go. I, I like the idea of stabilization because I think we need to look at the cannabis revenue as one-time funds and have to be very cautious about that, that we're not using this. I know we use it for deputies, but I think we need to be very cautious about making sure that this is money that's not going to be needed every year because we just don't know what cannabis is going to be doing in the years to come. I like the idea of having discretionary for supervisors to maybe be able to do a project in their community. I know many counties have that, where each supervisor is given X amount of money each year to be able to either save, to do a project in their community, or, you know, do little projects at a time. I know for myself, Scotts Valley, we, we really need to get the creeks cleaned out and worked on there. So that would be something that I would like to get done. And the Finley area also is, is working on our creek beds. But I don't know if that would be something that Water Resources would be doing with already with their 15%. But that is something that I would like to do. And I know Supervisor Simon, you also have that same issues with creeks that are overflowing due to... Idea that we're having this discussion, and I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say about it.
Okay, Supervisor Brown.
I'm not gonna have a whole lot to add because these are ongoing projects that'll go, go forward long after I'm out of here, or at least after I'm out of here. But one thing I would suggest and offer that you use as much of this as you can because we have a lot of grant opportunities and people run, you know, saying, well, we need to get more grants and more of this, more of that. Well, the reality is we never have the match for the grants, and this is your match. So you could maximize a lot of this money by, by using it for, for your, for your matches. And then the other thing that I would encourage is when you're doing fuel reduction or illegal cannabis removal, that kind of thing, don't be afraid to implement your abatement process and recoup this money. Put it right back on the property that you're cleaning up. And so that way, this one-time money is still there for the next project at some point when you're, when the property sells or the taxes are paid or anything like that. I think, you know, that's a responsible way to do it. Costs nothing extra to do it, a little bit extra work, but you, you'll, you'll recoup most of the money. So I, I would encourage that you have a policy for that, for this funding.
And Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Randall.
Yes, so I was just looking through, and I seen the numbers earlier that Patrick had provided. And, you know, I do, I do totally favor towards something that Supervisor Sabatier said about the drug task force. Reason I say that is because in, in, I'm sure in all of our districts we deal with it, you know, legal growth. There is one person that's, that's, that's doing this. But there's also issues with other, with other drugs as well. It'd just be nice to see something like that come back to fruition and maybe it's a match, as discussed. Maybe some of these funds could be spent for, I don't know, in number three where it says risk reduction, I don't know exactly, is that, is that talking about fires? I, I'm assuming that's what it's talking about. And if so, would this be able to be something that could get, could get some grand writers to do, to get the funds to match this potential dollar, these potential dollars with some of those other projects that are coming up or funding that we can hit? Just, just seeing if that's something to consider.
Thanks, Supervisor Randall. Supervisor Sabatier, and then I'll go to you, Supervisor Scott.
So just a couple of things on, on what's been mentioned, and I'll start with Supervisor Brown. Absolutely, we should always try to recoup any and all of the money that we spent on abating someone else's private property. That, that is their responsibility. If we are all of a sudden finding ourselves to take that responsibility on, we need to make sure that we get repaid for the service that we provided to the rest of the community that's been waiting for that private property owner to do the deed themselves. There's, obviously, there's some administrative fines that can come along with that. There's the abatement fees. And so there's, I think it should be seen as seed money. That way, it's a revolving amount of money, and it's a one-time, and it just sets it up. As far as the, the Board of Supervisors Discretionary Spending Fund, I, I might get some hate from folks in my district for this, but I think Lake County as a whole has too many large issues to start doing pet projects that helps us get reelected. I think we need to look at what needs to happen first in order for the rest of what, what we want Lake County to look like to be able to do that and, and get to that point. And I think that we have to work together as a Lake County team and not split money up in district situations. I just think that that, that would, now is not the time. If everything was great and, and we were flushed with money and we were, we were seeing the, the type of vision on the, on the ground level that we all have a vision for, then, then I think that would be an approach, an appropriate approach to use these funds. But we're not there yet. We have to look at the, what is the greatest need for Lake County, not the greatest need for each district, or else, again, the amount of money split up in so many ways will show nothing in comparison to what's on paper. We needed to show something in the reality. I'm gonna go back to my offer as well on a per-project basis. I'm also looking at the $700,000. And if we split this up, the $700,000 left over in this way, it, it's, it's not anything that can be used. So I would like to offer that $300,000 be placed towards a, three more deputies that can help create a drug task force, and $350,000 or 300,000, wherever it is, actually it was around 700,000. So 350 apiece, where the other 350 is used as an abatement seed money for fire protection. We have been using fire as an excuse for why we can't do what we want to do since 2015. And granted, it hurts when we have these fires, but if we're not doing anything about it as much as we can, then those excuses mean nothing. And we have to put some money to it, and we have to take it seriously. This will allow us to take it seriously.
Supervisor Brown.
So I'm gonna chime in with, you know, Tina gave an example. I don't think she's creating her wish list at the point, at, at this point. But I think those were good examples in what, what you do when you use money like this for, for bank stabilization or, you know, cleaning the creek or doing things like that, is you're eliminating the possibility of damage done during flood season where you have to take money then that could be used in your district or other districts. So it's, it is a, anything, anything that, those examples, Scotts Valley, Finley, you know, all that, those have been problems for years and years and years. If you resolve that, then you resolve a lot of the funding that would, could, could go other, other places, in the road department and other things. in the road department and other things. So I think those are good examples, and that's all they are, were examples. You could come up with a ton of them. People talk about the drug task force, and that's a really, really cool buzzword, but there is no drug task force now, and it's not because we don't have a problem, it's because a lot of the drugs, when they had the drug task force, they were illegal then. Now, you know, it's not. I mean, what I would do is work with law enforcement. The drug task force back in the day depended, or it was made up of Sheriff's Department, DOJ, CHP, probation, Save Lakeport, City of Clear Lake, and I think that's it. I would put those organizations back together just for the purpose of what can we do now in this environment of hug-a-thug? You know, you don't want to spend a bunch of money eradicating your, you know, just thinking that you are, because there are ways to deal with this, but it's not going to look like what it used to look like with the legitimate drug task force. You can't do that. So I would, even before you start, I would get that group together or, you know, ask the sheriff to what his thoughts are on who to put together on this, and then come up with a plan, then identify the funding for something that could be actually done. So, and there may be grant funding available for that as well. But, you know, methamphetamine, that was the big thing back in the day. Nobody's going to, it's not a thing anymore. Even though it's a problem, it's not, you know, they've made it legal practically, you know, so I'm surprised they don't give prescriptions for it from the state legislature, so...
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Scott?
You know, we were talking about the drug task force, and I see that the sheriff is with us. I would like for him to weigh in on what he feels could be done, you know, on our same thoughts and we're thinking.
He's coming in right now?
Thank you for the invite. Yeah, Supervisor Brown's not completely wrong on our ability to hold people accountable for drug activity as we have years and years ago. However, we still have other crimes that are associated with illegal drug use, quality of life issues associated with the illegal cultivation of cannabis. The whole idea that we're going to have an incentive for people to enter the non-black market for marijuana is the idea that if people refuse to participate, they'd be somehow held accountable. And if we don't hold them accountable through some mechanism, whether it's law enforcement or code enforcement, administrative processes, there's no incentive to participate. I know the cannabis industry is very supportive of those types of efforts. We do have other crimes that go along with the cultivation of marijuana, both legal and illegal. Several months back, I brought to the board a resolution, a proposal for, and a reward money to be put out for a homicide that occurred in Kelseyville that was largely surrounding marijuana, marijuana theft. One of the things that I have done, and again, this is all about people, every time I come to the board and talk about what I need, I need bodies out there to do these types of things. We had a team set up, or I don't know if you'd call it a team, but I dedicated a deputy one day a week to go out with one of the code enforcement officers to address quality of life issues, address code complaints that were co-occurring with illegal complaints, illegal activity complaints. Due to a couple of unforeseen injuries in both departments, we haven't been able to continue that program. So what I envision is a kind of a special enforcement detail unit, problem-oriented police, whatever you call it, I'm sure we'll come up with some neat buzz phrase for it that goes out and identifies what are the major complaints that are occurring in different parts of the county. Right now, we don't have the ability to be proactive. We're barely staffing our people at minimum levels to respond for calls for service. Calls for service stack up. I'm sure that members on this board receive complaints about not feeling safe. I get similar complaints about crime in people's communities and us not having the ability to do anything about it at all, and I think that we have an obligation to do that. So, you know, I'd like to restaff my patrol positions, put another person or two into investigations, and have a specialized unit that participates in both the eradication efforts that occur during the marijuana season, as well as in targeted enforcement of people that are involved in the, whatever crimes are left that we still can hold people accountable for, the homicides, the rapes, the human trafficking. And at the same time, have a unit dedicated to work with code enforcement hand-in-hand to address the cultivation issues that are going on throughout the county.
Thank you very much Sheriff Martin. Appreciate the input. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just wanted to mention that I'm not looking for going back to the old, I'm looking forward to doing something new because the laws have changed. But the fact is, I've had conversations with Sheriff Martin, and I think he wants to be able to do these things. He just doesn't have enough bodies to be able to go after, especially in the middle of nowhere eradication of cannabis. It's, the unfortunate situation is that the illicit trade is getting more and more bold by the year, and that's where it's starting to creep a little closer and closer to where residents that we serve are getting back to us and letting us know of the discomforts of that situation. And I think when it comes to drug use, yes, absolutely, there's very little that can be done with all the changes of the laws, but if you are cultivating marijuana illegally, if you are dealing drugs, those things still exist as being something that can go to court. Granted, the convictions maybe not be as harsh as they used to be, but that's what I'm looking at, is that possibility. And of course, looking for the sheriff to lead and make sure that we have the new way of doing things so that we can get the actual results that we're looking for, not trying to just carbon copy the past and making it work for the future, because that's not going to work out for us.
Appreciate that. And I think, you know, obviously, like we were talking about, this is a new industry we're talking about. I think the policy that has been presented today is a positive step in that direction. You know, when you look at the amounts and the opportunities that'll be given to the departments that you are speaking of, Sheriff Martin, code enforcement, the other departments that, just the allocations that are there that we're currently talking about, potential, you know, funding that could be going to them with this policy, we're just looking at setting up the policy. Hopefully, you know, obviously, those revenues will grow. I know this was a conservative approach to look at the dollars that have been collected at this point, but as we work to establish this industry over the next few years, that will continue in that direction. And I think, you know, the presentation today, I appreciate the presentation, having an opportunity to set up a policy in the beginning of this here, early on in the stages of the cannabis tax coming in. I know we're a little behind, but we're getting caught up now, and this gives us a good opportunity to move forward with a policy that will establish those things and be reviewed, as we said, potentially three times a year or as often as possible as we move through the budgeting processes for the county.
So would your board like Patrick to display the worksheet at all, or?
Yeah, if you are ready to display some, I see Supervisor Sabatier has his hand up again. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier, and then after that, Patrick, we'll turn it over to you.
And I don't want to repeat myself, but I just, I see the number of subjects that we'd like to split it up by diluting the amount that we have. I see this amount of money as potentially being capital improvements type of money, where it's something that we need to save a large amount of money to be able to get something done, and this is going to be it. And again, it might be short-lived. Let's make sure we get as much change as we can get by giving a little bit to so many different departments for so many little projects. The people that we represent may not see it visually themselves that it's made change in their community, and I think we have an opportunity here. But again, it needs to be on a project basis rather than not. And again, before we leave this conversation, I'd really love to know if we intend to spend the rest of the 700,000 odd thousand dollars from last year that is available to spend, because I don't want to see that sitting around. I'd rather see it be spent, and if so, then maybe we can ask for projects to be submitted to us for us to approve. That way, we don't just allocate it to something that doesn't happen.
Go ahead, Patrick.
All right, I will put this up. Okay, so...
Can you make it a little bigger, Patrick?
Is this, can everyone see this all right?
I think that's good.
Yeah. Okay.
So we just wanted to give you an opportunity to change any part of this you'd like. You know, if there are categories here you don't want, or the percentages aren't right, we're all ears.
Well, and the other thing, you know, anything that you do today, I mean, if you come up with a big project on one area and you're lacking in the ability to perform in another one, then you could always move the money around, can't you?
Yes, it would be able to be shifted later. That would be the purpose behind the budget reviews at each step of the way.
Right.
So based on that question, is this a reasonable starting point?
From my point of view, it's a reasonable starting point, you know, to get something in place and, you know, get it established and then review it, like we said, through budgets and other opportunities when it'll come back to the board. Those are my thoughts.
So you'd be looking at it again in February, if that's the case?
Carol, I got a question. Can any of this money be used for, to offset the cost? And this is one of those things where if we pay for this, then we can take the money that we're using on it now for some other place in the county, but for Public Defender?
Well, it is general tax money, even though there were some purposes contemplated. It is, if you remember a few months back, Anita provided your board an opinion as to that, it could conceivably be used for anything, and you could certainly make a linkage for the Public Defender services, you know, tied to the, I mean, it's very much connected really to the whole concept of a task force and...
Well, no, there are a lot of cases. Most of the cases that deal with cannabis nowadays are environmental, and, you know, there are a lot of them that are going through the Public Defender process or even the District Attorney's Office, so there's a direct connection there, and that funding of Public Defender funding could be, I'm not talking about augmenting, I'm talking about basically supplanting, and you take that money that we're already spending and be able to use it for something else that you have more discretion over.
And either way, it's the same thing, because it's a general tax that could be used for anything anyways.
This money could be used for anything?
Anything.
See, I thought it was something that was, okay.
We asked a question to Ms. Grant, and she came back to us and presented that even though it did say specifically four items in there, it was still a 50% threshold for obtaining the vote to pass, and it got 50% plus one, so therefore, it's eligible and available to us for any discretionary use that we feel.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead Anita.
The ordinance does say quite clearly that it is a general tax and therefore subject to whatever public purpose the board wants to assign to it, but it also does indicate certain things that at the time the tax was presented to the voters, the things that the Board of Supervisors found to be the most compelling uses.
Okay.
So does your board want to adopt this today, or do you want to send us back to refine it and bring it back to you, or what is your...
Nothing wrong with the way it is.
I'm fine with moving forward with it as presented.
Are there three?
I agree too, and I think even though it is a general tax, that we told the voters that there was areas we wanted to focus on, and I think we need to continue focusing on these areas.
All right, so it sounds like three at this point are willing to move forward.
So you could adopt this today. It would go into your policy and procedure manual as written, and then we would be back, the next time we would be back with it would be February. You know, realistically though, probably, I think it would be helpful to have a board ad hoc committee that would work with us to, you know, make plans for getting these monies out there in various ways, that, you know, it's not like you just want to adopt a plan and then not take another step associated with it. So I think an ad hoc committee would be helpful too, to actually put the funds in play or begin to.
All right, Patrick, at this point, can you take it down at this point?
Yes. So when we readdress this in February, if there's need to, you know, make adjustments, we can do so then?
Absolutely. February, June, and again in September. Or any other time you want to, any Tuesday.
Yeah, well, hopefully we get it set in place and, you know, get it moving forward. We're going to move forward with it, and it sounds like there's an opportunity for that today, that we establish it and just work on it with the committee, like you said, and are looking to get the funds out. I do know, you know, there is one question I know that Supervisor Sabatier brought up, and with the 700,000 that is still left over and available, if it passes today, that would be just allocated through this draft policy process or would be added to that, or I don't think there was an answer to that question.
Your board had given staff direction to come back with a round two of the cannabis grants, and so we have developed a new offering for that. Patrick, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, for that remaining allocation that was not spent, we did have the direction to develop the second round of the internal grant program. It was opened up to, at least in the proposed materials we've created, it would be opened up to larger projects based off the discussion. There would not be the $100,000 cap. If there, a project could be permitted approval, even if there was going to be a future cost, the proposal would just have to clearly identify it. So those are the materials that we've worked up for it right now, but we haven't brought those forward yet.
All right, any more discussion from the board at this point? Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to express my discomfort that I have here, where setting up percentages now is going to make it very difficult to change it in the future. I know we can if you have the right amount of votes, but at the same time, it's somewhat already setting up specific departments with expectations of what they could or couldn't do, and changing those percentages will create potential gaps in what they can and can't do and what they've prepared for. I just, I think without seeing specifically what it could be spent on in much more specificity, that it feels good to have percentages, but what is the outcome? I also don't feel too comfortable with number eight, with $2 million unspent money for stabilization fund, when that could be $2 million that can go to either a project or other uses to make change in the community. And I think that if we need to have $2 million just to cover potential issues with a lower-than-expected revenue for cannabis taxes based on the fact that we've dedicated ourselves to maybe salaries or things like that, that that's already too much being dedicated to salaries, that we need to be careful on how much is put into salaries. I just think that we have an opportunity here, might be short-lived, and putting aside millions of dollars and then splitting up the rest, I still feel it's not going to have the impact that I am hopeful that this tax will have. And setting us up with percentages now will set up the next conversation based on what we say today and makes it that much more difficult to change. And again, we're only doing it on how we feel about it versus what's actually being offered to be used with these funds.
Thank you very much Supervisor Sabatier. I would like an opportunity just for a suggestion, maybe to look at the overall impact that this could have on our entire county. They talk about potentially instead of having another committee put together, that maybe we look to the Economic Development Task Force to be the committee that talks about issues that may be impacting the entire county or opportunities that are there. So I just, I make that suggestion, maybe as an opportunity for us to move forward with this. this, to really look to projects, as you were saying, that will have the most impact for all of the county as we're moving forward. So just a suggestion that is already formed, it's on there, myself, Supervisor Crandall, and also you as an alternate Supervisor Sabatier, so just a suggestion at this point.
And I appreciate the suggestion, because it does attach it more in the way that I'd like to see it attached, which is on a project basis. And I know I've already said two examples, the Middle Creek Restoration Project and the potential airport expansion, but also full circle. And again, all those things cost a lot of money, but all those things would make a huge impact in our communities in comparison to never happening, because we can't get access to that level of funding again in the future. Just a potential ideas of what kind of projects it could be attached to based on Economic Development Committee's decisions.
And I do say that's a real opportunity, like you said, on some of those big ones. And you mentioned also, you know, some of the big ones that going forward, and long-term legacy projects too, which I would consider the full circle and also the restoration project, so. Okay, any more discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none, going to open this up for a public comment. Jake, can you please open up public comment, please?
Yes. Sent a request out to the room here. The request is out to the Zoom room. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, it's Jessica Pisca with the Quaberry Council, and I really would like to see some big programs or projects kind of spelled out. You know, with the Risk Reduction Authority, we've been talking about building capacity for some of our major priorities for disaster preparedness in the county, and getting a grant writer with that committee to really help build that capacity, looking at a year-round vegetation management program to support the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance and the zone of benefit, those are really big priorities for all of you, and so I'd really like to see some momentum behind those. And also with public works and a robust vegetation clearing program along the major roadways so that we can have safe evacuations, corridors, and address some of the really difficult, dangerous evacuation routes in our county. Those are going to be some big projects that need a lot of attention. And I just really feel like there's an opportunity, like Supervisor Sabatier said, to really spell out what your priorities are and make that the focus of these funds. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, do we have any more public comment? Jake, can you send out one more notice, please, just to make sure? In the virtual room?
Yes, I sent that notice out right now.
Okay, Jake, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and we are going to close the virtual room at this point. We're gonna bring it back to chambers for public comment. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to make public comment on this item?
I don't, okay. Yes, this is Lance Williams. I do have a public comment. Again, the group, the Lake County Cannabis Alliance is very excited that the money is going to be put to use. It's obviously a little scary, I'm hearing all the comments here, you know, is it gonna go in the right place, but at least it is being used. When Measure C was out there, I was putting out there to the public and friends and family and just the locals, that, you know, the money would be used a certain way. So I do believe that it should be used as a general fund, but I also believe that when we talked about enforcement, and that seems to be a key issue here right now, that it does get used for enforcement. So I would like to see more of that money before you vote, at 7.5% going towards enforcement and Sheriff Martin. I'm thinking closer to 12 to 15% to start off with, and then you could reduce it. We did have a trespassing on a garden this last weekend, and the response time was 20 minutes, so that was great. But as I've said before, this will be a billion-dollar industry, so we would want to have enforcement to be a key factor here. And then, of course, we have been talking about the eradication of illegal grows. So that would be one of the requests that we do have there. When I saw education at 2.5%, I, again, just like the sheriff's budget, I'd like to at least see that at 5%. I think the children in the community are very important, and if we could make maybe some changes there to start off with, because you can always change it later, but again, we really want infrastructure and obviously being able to protect our businesses and help out the children in the community is something that we are looking for. I did get other comments from other people. I believe they must be ecomments that I'm not able to see here, but again, I'm very happy to see this happening. And again, I'm not really sure if it should be in percentages or if it should be set aside, but I think it's a lot to take in, and maybe if it doesn't work out, we can just revisit this. Patrick, thank you so much for putting this forward, and the graph there showing what the percentages would be used for was very helpful. So I know you're gonna do what you guys are gonna do, but if you are gonna make a vote to at least consider this, please put more into the education, which we voted for in Measure C, and for enforcement in the police department specifically, and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Lance. Okay, is there any more public comment in the board chambers?
There are no other public comments in the board chamber.
Okay, at this time then, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for some more deliberation, hopefully action. But I would like, Patrick, if you could talk a little bit about the education portion and law enforcement portion. You touched on it a little bit earlier about potential tax that could be coming back down the pipe from the state to different departments, and I wonder if you could just elaborate on that or give us insight on what may be happening in the future or what we currently have, because we are, have been successful at least in one or two grants at this point, so.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. So for example, of a grant that we have just received was a public health and safety grant, that there's $500,000 set aside for code enforcement, $500,000 towards a youth program, which is a family rep program that will be run through the Lake County Office of Education. The way the state discretionary tax revenues work is that Prop 64 sets a series of priorities for the state. Once these required thresholds are met, the rest of the money goes into a discretionary pot. 60% of that pot goes towards youth education and early intervention programs. 20% of that pot goes towards law enforcement. There is more crossover than that, they haven't finalized law of these programs yet, but next year it does appear there are going to be at least two major grants offered that will offer local funding to law enforcement, and I believe at least two more for youth education. The state is still finalizing a lot of these regulations, so like I said, it is a little speculative. But the other areas on here just aren't really going to be offered that level of discretionary funding through the state, so that's why I highlighted it. So it's something to consider, however, it does remain an unknown.
So Supervisor Sabatier, or?
Real quick, I just wanted to tell Patrick, he's not allowed to use the term pot when we're talking about this subject, so he's gotta...
Find a different word.
Yeah.
I'll work on that.
I had a quick question. Mr. Williams mentioned something about ecomments. Did we receive any ecomments? Because I know that for a while I have not seen anything attached to any item from ecomments, and I'm not sure if that means we're not receiving any, because before in the past I used to see additional attachments for each item where an ecomment was received. So I just thought I'd ask to see, did we not receive anything?
There is one for 7.2.
That is correct. That's the only one.
I'm being told that...
There are actually two attached to that.
Where?
If you go into your agenda software...
Ah, okay, gotcha, I wasn't using that.
There is, and then open that item, then there's a button you can push for two public comments.
Yes, thank you. I'm told that the comments were not read, and there's an issue with unmuting on some of these two. Thank you.
That's from the swans.
So there's a comment from Jennifer Smith and Damian Ramirez.
Okay.
Is there a reason the public comments aren't made public?
No, they are public. If you go into Granicus Online, they're public.
No, I'm in our agenda, and I don't see the attachments. Granicus has not worked for me for a while, and I've been using the, just going through the agenda, which works just as well, and it used to have the attachments on the main agenda that the public can see, but now the public can't see the public comments, and it's not a public comment if it's not made public.
Well, this is the first we're hearing this. It had been functional, so we'll have to see what's going on.
Okay.
And I'm thinking too, these public comments just came in, one at 2:05 today and one at 11:18, so it's not like they've been sitting there for a while.
So if you go into the public view of your agenda, which is at County of Lake Legisstar, and you look at the line for the October 27th agenda in the far right column, you'll see a link, you can click for ecomment, and, and let's see if they're actually in there. Here, can you just a moment?
And I'd like to suggest that if we receive a comment during the time that we're in the meeting, we should not be expected to have read that public comment, if it can be read for us, or else that public comment is made, but not actually entertained at all for us to listen to here and maybe take action.
We do not get an alert each time a public comment lands, so I'm not sure how to respond to that, but they are, the two that you have for cannabis here are visible. They're also visible in your app that you use for the meeting.
So again, my app is not working, just wondering if you can read those two public comments.
Sure, the first one comes from Jennifer Smith at 2:09 PM today. "The way in which the cannabis funds are allocated may limit its use and impact. Targeted expenditure by category is a great concept. I feel that the money should be allocated on a project-by-project basis within those categories. By allocating the funds by percentage, there's a great chance that money won't be used. The money should be spent on sustainable projects that further the health and wealth of the county that won't be dependent on further cannabis funding." The next one comes from Damian Ramirez at 11:18 AM today. "I would like to see more money allocated to board discretionary funding, giving them the ability to receive public input and thoughtfully assess exactly which areas are in the most need of financial support at any given time. Some money should also be made available for county road improvements, giving safer access to some of the remote cultivation areas in the county. This would also encourage more projects to occur in these remote locations, minimizing many of the uses, excuse me, many of the issues that arise with neighbors and growers."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, what I'd like to do is bring back the board for action. We have an opportunity to move forward with this policy today, if someone is willing to make a motion. Don't everybody jump at once.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve cannabis tax uses and expenditures policies and procedures.
Is there a second? All right, I will, I will go ahead, there's a motion made, I'll go ahead and, can I pass the gavel to Supervisor Sabatier, and I will second that, and I can second that motion? I can do that, correct Anita?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And I would like to do that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Joanna, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah. Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gavel's back in your hands.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier.
Well, Mr. Chair, just a final point of clarification on, you know, should we work with the two supervisors that are assigned to the Economic Development Committee to take next steps with this?
There was a proposal of mine, you know, how does the board want to move forward with that? Do we want to form another committee? But my thoughts on it was it ties right into big projects and opportunities with the Economic Development Task Force, and thought that was a good opportunity there. But Supervisor Crandall, and then I'll go to Supervisor Sabatier.
If you want to do that, as opposed to creating a new committee, I can be the alternate and Supervisor Sabatier could be the other appointee to the Economic Development Board as, you know, it seemed to be based around a lot of the comments that, you know, going into the other committee, this would kind of take care of that. Unless you want to do the other committee, that's fine too. I'm just trying to provide solutions, so.
Okay, I think obviously that would be another conversation, we're talking about appointments and who's alternates and so, so. If that's something you want to bring back, you have an opportunity to do that. I know Supervisor Scott, go ahead.
So who did you say that was on this committee? Because I have an invitation to show up tomorrow for this committee, so I'm thinking...
There was a calendaring error that, and I've notified everybody that unless you're on that committee, to disregard the calendaring error. So the two supervisors are Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Simon, and then Supervisor Sabatier is the alternate. And in fact, because they have the meeting tomorrow, when you do calendars, we need to make sure we have two attendees for tomorrow.
And on that note, is there a way we can get a list of who sits on what committees, just so we know who to contact for questions people might ask? Because we just have built so many in the last couple of months.
Yes. Absolutely.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
And I think that, in my opinion, the conversation about using the Economic Development Committee came up in what I believe was in replacement of looking at these percentages, and if we've, not if, but we've just approved these percentages, therefore the 12.5% under economic development is really what you would be discussing that I'm thinking of. And so that, to me, of course, that's what the Economic Development Committee should be discussing on how to utilize those funds to the best of their abilities. So I don't think it has to be formalized, since we've already approved of the percentages going in specific buckets, now the Economic Development Committee has 12.5% to play with potentially.
Okay. So it sounds like moving forward, Carol, we're gonna, you know, at this point, we're gonna use the Economic Development Task Force that we were talking about in the meetings, we'll come back, some proposals on those opportunities and move forward in that manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that will conclude our 7.2 item. We're gonna move to 7.3, consideration A, a board appointment of delegate and alternate to the Rural County Representatives, RCRC Board of Directors for 2021. B, appoint, board appointment of delegates and other alternates to Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, Board of Directors for 2021. And C, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the Rural Counties Representatives of California Environmental Services, Joint Powers Authority, Board of Directors for 2021.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to introduce Carolyn Purdy, who's gonna present this item to you, and she'll also present 7.5, if you'd be willing to take it up right after this item, because they're very similar in nature. So Carolyn, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Carolyn Purdy, Administrative Analyst. This item is a request from the Rural Counties Representatives of California, also known as RCRC, that your board designate a delegate and alternate to the RCRC Board of Directors for 2021. Your current 2020 delegate is Supervisor Crandall, and alternate is Supervisor Sabatier. RCRC is also requesting your board designate your delegate and alternate to both the Golden State Finance Authority, referenced as GSFA, Board of Directors, and the Environmental Services Joint Power Authority, referenced as ESJPA, Board of Directors for 2021. and the Environmental Services Joint Power Authority, referenced as ESJPA Board of Directors for 2021. Your current 2020 delegate for GSFA is Supervisor Crandall, and alternate is Supervisor Sabatier, and the 2020 delegate for ESJPA is Supervisor Simon, and alternate is Public Services Director Lars Ewing. The first RCRC meeting of 2021 will be held on January 13th. And that is it.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Carolyn.
Sure.
Moving forward, um, any suggested, or comments, or suggestions, or changes, uh, that need to happen to those two boards? Or, um, are we looking to, uh, is anyone looking to change, I guess? Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So I will say that the RCRC Board is a very interesting board to be a part of, uh, because of the amount of work that they do with the state specifically. Um, where I, I, I feel that it's a position where change can be made. Um, I will say that I've not made too many meetings, mainly because of my, uh, being part of LTA APC. Uh, they meet typically on the same, um, days, on the second Wednesday or the first Wednesday of the month. I forget which one it is specifically right now off the top of the head. Uh, but I have been able to make some of the meetings, so I'm okay with remaining an alternate, but at the same time, I'm okay if someone else who knows that they can be there all the time, um, would want to take that over, just for the fact that, uh, I, I, I know that I, I get, uh, double booked sometimes.
Okay. Yeah, Supervisor Scott?
And I know for myself, um, because Supervisor Crandall's on this committee, I'm his alternate for another committee, and I'm, I think I need, I need to stay as alternate on his other committee to make sure he's backed up for this committee. If that makes any sense.
Uh, yeah, I think so. All right, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with staying on this committee, um, and, uh, the AAA on aging, that's the one I think you're referring to, Tina. Um, yeah, but no, I'm fine with staying on this one. It's usually conflicted, but I, I still would even double book at times when I had a, a different, different meeting when it had to come with the tribe. But I don't have those meetings any longer, so I can fully make these meetings once, there's no issues whatsoever. Unless there's someone itching to be on it, um, I'm fine with staying on. Active part.
All right, so, you know, obviously, at, at this point, then, we have, uh, the director, obviously, your, as the main appointee is Supervisor Crandall. Uh, do we have any? Doesn't sound like we have any volunteers at this point to, to continue on. Um, as far as RCRC Board also, you know, I'm also on Lake Transit Authority and Area Planning Council. Uh, so I would have those, uh, potentially, those some conflicts, at least, uh, but it's just an alternate, so maybe there's opportunities, uh, there, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I'm willing to remain. I just wanted the Board to be aware in case somebody had the potential to have that free in their calendar all the time, that maybe they wanted to step up. I'm willing to remain as the alternate. Um, just wanted to be, uh, transparent with my capabilities of being able to get to those meetings.
Okay.
All right, the only thing I have to offer is I know who won't be on it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. Trying to figure it out with, with four of us at this point is definitely a challenge, so I appreciate that, uh, information, but Supervisor Sabatier, it sounds like RCRC, uh, we have our two folks, uh, two board members at this point. And, um, do we have to do each one of these appointments individually? As section A, section B, section C?
Mr. Chair, the appointments to the same body can be made as a group.
Okay, thank you. And so the, uh,
Can I have another question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
For number, uh, letter C, uh, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the Rural Counties Representatives, was Lars Ewing the alternate and Supervisor Crandall the primary? Uh, I, I heard it, but I missed it.
It's in the reverse.
I think it was in the reverse. I'm the alternate in, right? Uh, I am the alternate. And I think, uh, Lars was the main.
And doing a very capable job, and Lars has expressed his, uh, desire to continue.
Okay, I just wanted to check in. Thank you. It sounds good.
Okay. All right, so the next one would be, uh, obviously, you've got RCRC and also the, the GSFA.
And they, they, those meetings are conducted, right, in tandem? So for example, they'll start RCRC at 9:00 AM, and they'll start, uh, Golden State Finance at 11:00. They hand the gavel over to a, to a different person that chairs that meeting and goes back. It's in essence, uh, going to the same meeting, um.
It's like the LTA APC.
All right, then we have our two delegates there then, or two, uh, folks on that board, and I'm willing to stay on as the alternate with Lars on the ESJPA, so, uh, if there's no more discussion, uh, from the board, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. And we'll bring it back to the board for action. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will. I mute the Zoom floor here. That request is out. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, hearing none, Jake, go ahead and close the, uh, virtual room. We'll bring it back. Any, uh, anyone for public comment in the chambers?
We seem to have lost the public in the chambers.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead and close public comment, bring it back for reaction. I think we're gonna need three different motions. Um, so go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve board appointment of delegate and alternate, which is the delegate is Supervisor Crandall, alternate myself, Supervisor Sabatier, to the Rural County Representatives Board of Directors for 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Joanna.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
All right, in, um, let's just, uh, let's go to item 7.5.
How about, uh, letter B, if possible?
Oh, yeah, I forgot. I was moving too quickly. Sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointments of delegate Supervisor Crandall and alternate myself, Supervisor Sabatier, to Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors for 2021.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Chair, I move to approve board appointment of delegate, Director Lars Ewing, and alternate Supervisor Simon, to the Rural Counties Representatives of California Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority Board of Directors for 2021.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on, uh, to our next agenda. Let's move to item 7.5. This is, uh, consideration of appointments of director and alternate for the California State Associations of Counties, uh, Board of Directors for 2021. Carolyn?
Thank you, Chair Simon. Uh, and just for reference, my video is not working. I tried to put it on, but it's not cooperating. So anyway, here we go. So this item is from the California State Association of Counties, also referred to as CSAC, with a request for your Board to designate a delegate and alternate to the CSAC Board of Directors for 2021. Under the provisions of the California State Association of Counties Constitution, members of the Board of Directors and their alternates are elected by their respective Board of Supervisors to a one-year term of office, commencing with the first official meeting of the CSAC Annual Conference. This year, the conference will begin on Thursday, November 12th, and the first meeting will be held on Thursday, November 19th. Any member of your Board of Supervisors is eligible for directorship. Your current 2020 delegate is Supervisor Sabatier, and alternate is Supervisor Scott. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, I, again, one of these associations that I think has the potential for making true change. I know that I've, uh, enjoyed being in the position, uh, especially really being able, I feel, uh, help out with Dr. Pace and his needs for, uh, public health during our COVID-19 emergency, uh, and would love to remain on the Board of Directors.
Okay. How about the alternate?
Um, I have no problem, um, staying as the alternate or having somebody else, um, sit in. Um, I've actually only had to take one phone call that Supervisor Sabatier wasn't able to take this last year.
Okay, uh, being that no one is asked to be removed, or would like a different assignment, we'll go ahead and, move forward with, uh, the, the two delegates, uh. So, um, any more questions or comments from the Board? Okay, then go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I have sent a unmute request out to the room. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, um, not hearing any, uh, public comment on this item. We'll go ahead and close the room, bring it back to board chambers. We have any public in the board chambers?
Still no public.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Bruno Sabatier as the delegate for CSAC, and Supervisor Tina Scott as the alternate.
Second.
For 2021.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we got two more items to go here. Let's go to item, um, 7.6. Uh, the second reading, consideration of ordinance amending section 2-3A, point 1, Article 1, Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code, compensation of the Board of Supervisors.
So, Mr. Chair, uh, staff doesn't really have a presentation on this, because it is the second reading, but Matthew Rothstein prepared the item. If you, uh, have questions or would like him to present it, he can.
Are there any questions from the Board on the second reading?
No.
None for me either.
Yeah, this does fix board salaries at present levels. Without this, they would, uh, go up at the point the other elected salaries go up, and that was not your Board's intent.
Yep. Okay, if there are no more questions from the Board, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, open this up to public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will open up the room here. I've sent out a unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and close public comment on this item. We're gonna bring it back to, uh, the board chambers. Uh, we still, uh, obviously, I think there is no public, but I just want to confirm one more time.
No public.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the Board. For action.
Do we, do we just offer the ordinance, or we have to motion to?
Oh, you offer the ordinance.
I offer the ordinance.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to our 7.4 item, consideration of proposed findings of facts and it's, and decision in the appeal of Clint Nelson, Clint Nelson, uh, Red Hills AVA Stakeholders Alliance, AB 20-01. On the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you'll see the findings of facts are presented for you. The decision here was four votes to deny the appeal, with Supervisor Crandall recusing himself from the proceeding. So at this point, it'll only be four of you voting on the, on the findings of fact, and then to make your formal motion to deny the appeal.
Yes, Supervisor Crandall?
I can remain, or should I just recuse myself one more time on this one, or how does that work here?
I think probably just to recuse yourself very briefly, sir.
I will do so.
Supervisor Crandall gone? Okay. Excellent. All right, uh, we'll open up discussion. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, just wanted to say, I read through this. It's got all the details of the, uh, timelines and the conversations that we had, the, uh, postponement of both the, um, uh, Planning Commission, as well as the, uh, Board of the Supervisors, uh, appeal process. I, I think everything is there, and, um, I appreciate Ms. Graham's work on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Uh, any more comments from board members? Okay, um, at this point, hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and open it up to, uh, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Jake, if you could please open the room. Greatly appreciated. We are on item 7.4.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the room. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, uh, not hearing any public comment or seeing anything in the chat room or anything. Go ahead and, uh, close, uh, the public comment for the virtual room, and we'll go and check once again with the board chambers. Do we have any public comment in board chambers?
No public comment.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment, bring this back, uh, to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of Clint Nelson, Red Hills AVA Stakeholders Alliance, AB 20-01.
Second. Second by Supervisor Brown. Go ahead, Joanna.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and go to, uh,
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, sir. There's still a motion to deny the appeal.
Nope, I apologize for that, and I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know if someone can, uh, text Supervisor, uh, Crandall? Let him know that we're back.
I'm on it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Carol. All right, we're gonna go to calendars. We'll start with Supervisor Sabatier.
All right.
Item 7.1.
So first, I hope to come back home to electricity. Hopefully, that'll happen within the next couple of hours. We'll see what happens. Um, tomorrow, I do have a question to, uh, Ms. Hutchinson. I have here a department head meeting. Is that correct, or?
So again, I was having some calendaring issues. We do have a department head meeting, uh, tomorrow at 1:30. Um, and we, typically, the chair is present for all department head meetings, and the supervisor, who I believe was due to come in the rotation, was Supervisor Scott. Um, so I would like to confirm that two of you can be there.
Yes, I will be there.
I would only be able to stay till 2:00, so if Supervisor Sabatier could fit that into his calendar.
I don't think it goes till 2:00. It goes from 10:00 to 12:00.
No.
I have it from 1:30 to 2:03.
Well, there were, the, you're, then you have the same malfunction Supervisor Scott had with the economic. Well, there were, then you have the same malfunction Supervisor Scott had with the Economic Development Task Force. There was a error with Zoom calendaring, so if you could, that's, that's what's at 10 o'clock tomorrow, the Economic Development Task Force.
Gotcha. Okay, well, I knew that I had been at a department head meeting, so it didn't feel like it was my turn, but I thought I'd bring it up just to make sure. So I'm glad that we could clarify all of that.
Would you like to come to the department head meeting at 1:30 tomorrow?
Can I ask a question? Carol, are you, are you guys having, this is tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 1:30 there's
So you'll have another one in November and one in December as well or?
No, typically department head meetings are quarterly, although we've done them kind of on an as-needed basis in light of all of what's going on, but at this point we don't have another one calendared.
I would like to go to one. I don't want to miss a chance. I need, I'd like to go to one before January.
Okay, would you like to come tomorrow then?
If I could, if that's okay with the board.
At 1:30.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand why you want to be there. So absolutely, take the opportunity.
Yep.
Okay, I will send the Zoom link Supervisor.
So I just want to check with Sam, our videographer. Are we on cartoons or are we on us? Because I'm watching cartoons on the corner of my eyes.
What's, there's really no difference.
Gotcha. Okay. So tomorrow, starting off the call with EOC update for what's happening with COVID-19. Just to update you all, I know that Dr. Pace had brought us the issue with the state seeing our test site as not a mobile test site, which obviously it is since it's only drive-through. And so I have been in contact with the state. Unfortunately, I've not come to a resolution with that. And as of yesterday, got both of our representatives who are on deck to say that yes, we need their help to help us come to a conclusion. Because I think this Saturday is the deadline for the contract where things would change. So hopefully something will come out of that. I have a CSAC call later on that day and it looks like we're also following up, EJ and I with looking over the AB 626 and what our status is for that. Following Friday, the 30th, I am going to go on the east side of Clear Lake, a meeting with Cal Fire as well as Bureau of Land Management, US Department of Forestry, and going to look in that area. They've been working for the past three to four years to do control burn. It seems that they might be done with all their archaeological NIPA work and we're looking to see if we can expedite the rest of the process so we can get a nice control burn on what I believe is approximately 2,200 acres between the city of Clear Lake and the open BLM land so that we can add some extra protection to the area. So I'm hoping that meeting continues as well as it's been going. On the 31st, I plan on being in Austin Park for the trunk or treat Halloween festivities from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. On Monday, the 2nd, starting off the week with a Middle Creek Project Restoration Committee meeting, back with our CAO, Ms. Hutchinson, to discuss our agenda, another CSAC call, and then Tuesday back here to go over our agenda.
Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow I have actually two meetings at 8:00 AM, but I'll be attending the disaster reserve discussion. And then I have a meeting with constituent at 11:00, First Five Commission at 2:00. And then I have a meeting with Tom Metcalf at 3:30 that I may have to push because it looks like our First Five Commission meeting might get pushed because we're also competing with department head meeting. On Thursday, I have a 9:00 AM LCBC committee meeting. And then at 3:30, a preliminary PG&E settlement meeting. On Friday, it's pretty open. Monday, I have meetings with constituents at 10:00 and at noon. And then just preparing for Tuesday's meeting. Or actually, we don't have Tuesday, yes, preparing for Tuesday's meeting and lunch today.
Okay Supervisor Crandall? You're still on mute Supervisor Crandall. Jake, can you get Supervisor Crandall unmuted?
There we go. How about now? All right, so tomorrow I have a phone call with Senator Mavire at 8:30. And then at 10:00 AM, I wanted to make sure that the department head meeting, I keep getting that, I know Carol, you said something about that being an accident or is that, is that something else?
Calendaring error. So we can only have two supervisors present at the department head meetings and so that is Supervisor Simon and Brown. Sorry for the error.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. So, okay, so then Thursday, constituent meeting in Nice that I have in the morning and then in the PM, AB 626 follow-up with Bruno, as you mentioned earlier. Friday, there's a blue collar committee meeting that we have once a month. And then Saturday, I'll be doing a trunk or treat at the Moose Lodge. Monday, November 2nd, I'll be at the Middle Creek Restoration at 10:30, 12 o'clock COVID Recovery Group and CAO meeting at 3 o'clock with Carol. I'm back here next, next Tuesday, the 3rd for the board.
Supervisor Brown?
With your mask on, it sounded like you said a trump or treat, so I wasn't sure. I was just curious. The way you wanted to
Whatever makes you
wipe out those swans, I'm not too sure now about you. I don't, my calendar's pretty clear. I got a department head meeting tomorrow, it sounds like, so I'm looking forward to that. And I do have a few meetings, but there's nothing really scheduled that I'm gonna be meeting with a couple of department heads or some projects that may continue in, in my district and in the county. So I don't really have anything on calendar, so just kind of wind it down.
All right, thank you Supervisor Brown.
Yep.
My calendar, tomorrow morning I have the RDA Board meeting at 8:30. Then I have the Economic Development Task Force at 10:00 and then the department head meeting at 1:30. Wednesday, Thursday morning, we have the EOC call. I think it starts out there in the morning. It must be down here in my district, obviously. Friday, don't have, currently don't have anything scheduled. Saturday, we'll be attending a drive-through giveaway too here on property we're doing for Halloween. And then Monday, have the recovery meeting at what time is that? At 12 o'clock, I think is when that is on Monday at noon. And then back here for the meeting on Tuesday and then agenda review afterwards on November 3rd. So that's it. I will say, you know, obviously the same thing, you know, hopefully we're all back on power here pretty soon in our district. I do know that we were able to get a generator. I want to thank Sheriff and EOC for doing that for our senior center here in Southlake County so they could operate through these times. And hopefully we'll be off that by tomorrow. Right, with that, we're gonna go into closed session. That closes out our open session calendar. And I will go ahead and read our open, our closed session items. Okay, we have closed session. We are going to do 8.1, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B, one, Appointment of Special District Administrator. We went into closed session earlier and did items 8.2 and 8.3. And then 8.4 is Public Employee Evaluations, Title Public Health Director, Entitled Air Quality Control Director. Being that we addressed 8.2 and 8.3 earlier, do I need to read those out before we go into closed session? Anita?
No, no sir, you don't.
Okay, I just wanted to double check. All right, so with that, we're going into closed session. Thank you for attending our meeting today.